Okay, so we can go ahead and start and then obviously we can't take any votes until until we have a quorum, but I suspect that we will. So let's go ahead and so welcome to the select board meeting. Today is the 26th of January 2021 and we begin with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God indivisible with liberty, justice for all. Ed, can you lead us through the remote participation preamble?
Sure can. Excuse me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions for the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the March 15th, 2020, and March 23rd order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting, the Town of Southampton Select Board, is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public adequately accessed the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us/join, hit join a meeting in the top right of the screen, type in the meeting ID of 815-484-33509 and password of 611337, hit join. Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note, in to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call-in telephone number is 646-558-856 or by watching Public Access TV Charter Spectrum, Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at select board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled select board meeting, they'll be read at the select board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised select board meeting, they'll be read at the next select board meeting. Please send public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the select board agenda.
All right. Thanks, Ed. Does anybody have any, welcome Francine, welcome Jim. Does anybody have any gems of wisdom, words of gratitude that they'd like to share before we start?
I would just like to say there was a lovely memorial that we celebrated in Southampton in remembering the 400,000 plus people who passed away from COVID.
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, Matt. Absolutely. That was wonderful. And thank you, Chris, for making all that happen.
Hello, everyone.
Hi there. How you doing?
Hey, Matt.
Yeah, I know.
I also wanted to, this is John Martin's last meeting and he's not here yet, but I certainly wanted to say thank you to him. For those of you that you don't know, last meeting, he announced that he is actually moving, selling his house, recently retired, so he's moving. So we'll certainly say it again when he arrives, but I know that it's a lot of commitment to be on the select board and I know that he was working at UMass in a pretty big job for most of the time that he was on the select board and only recently retired. So I just want to say thank you to John. We'll be sure to say it again during this meeting, but I'm gonna miss him. And that being said, you know, obviously if there are folks that are interested in stepping up, that would have to have a special election, of course, and there's a procedure that Lucy can, I let you know about. And so, anything else? Then we'll move on to the no public hearing. So appointments, resignations, we have one resignation. It's Charles or Chuck Knickie, Charlie's son, who is resigning from the Housing Authority. Is there a motion to approve this resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Chris and then Matt, but I do believe that we now have Kathy Ingram back to do minutes, correct?
Correct.
Good. So I'll continue to, because I think I'll just go ahead and mention who did the initial and second for her benefit, so she doesn't have to go back on it. But so from now on, we'll get the minutes from Kathy again, but she won't be present during this meeting. Anyway, we have an emotion and second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Foul's eye.
Roll into.
And Grodenheim. And I just wanted to say thank you to Chuck for his time on the Housing Authority. I had joined a little bit on the Housing Authority to learn a little bit more about what they did and Chuck joined at a time when we really needed members. We had unfortunately, a woman that was on the Housing Committee passed away and she was, worked in housing in Holyoke, so she was someone that had a lot of expertise. So thank you to Chuck for stepping in and serving on that committee. And we do have openings on the Housing Authority. Ed, did you get a volunteer request to be on the Housing Authority?
I did, for one, that at the time was intended to be requested as the state appointee. So I asked Jim Senni if they had any inclination as to whether now with Chuck resigning, if they would like to maybe make that one as an appointment of the town rather than from the state.
Okay, so one member of the Housing Authority is a state appointed, so that's what he was referring to. And there are five seats on the Housing Authority, so if anybody's interested, please step up. Next is presentation of quarterly reports and Randall Kemp has been excused because of the weather. He's out keeping us all safe. And so Board of Health, thank you Caitlin for stepping up and then Jim from the Water Department's with us. So Kate, thanks so much. And I'll probably just defer to you then to the, my report, because you did an excellent job at the Board of Health meeting, raising a lot of good questions and opening up the conversation and talking about case tracing. So if you can just give us a little update from the Board of Health?
Absolutely. So they've obviously been very busy. So they're still working on the Sharps program and plan on working on the budget shortly. We do plan on talking about next fiscal year at the upcoming Board of Health meeting after the joint meeting with the school committee. We had a good meeting with Stephanie Foss, Nurse Leader for the schools this past weekend and are looking forward to a joint meeting to address some of the concerns that the school has with contact tracing and also clarify some expectations going forward. We've been in close contact with the schools and are helping to work with them to determine whether or not the school will be opened or closed, which currently they're opening. And we, as you know, did a presentation about the contact tracing process to help people to understand what that entails, because I think it's helpful to understand how that process works. Southampton is also participating in a regional vaccine clinic, so Jerry wanted me to let you know that she's, has not received any official notification yet about the dates or logistics of the actual vaccine clinic, but she did say that she will forward that information as it becomes available. They do anticipate that the vaccine will become available very soon and it will be an appointment-only scheduling process. I know that there's a phone scheduling process for actual vaccine appointments, but there will be a letter being sent out by the Board of Health to members of the town, including that information, and she does anticipate receiving that information. In fact, she thought she would have it yesterday or today. She hopes to work with the Council on Aging to help get that letter out as quickly as possible, as we know that many town members do not have social media or will have access to that information online. So they're moving to Phase Two of vaccines on February 1st and they plan on putting the information also on the town website and social media, so get that out as quickly as possible. From the health, health agent, they've done 21 Title V inspections. So although there's a pandemic, there still has been a large number of house sales and inspections required. There's been 17 perk tests completed, 11 final inspections completed, and 18 food establishment or mobile food inspections, as well as three property inspections. So Nicole has been very busy these past couple of months. And of course, our goal for the upcoming months are the vaccine distribution as well as, you know, monitoring the public health. It seems like we're having a decrease in overall cases and a decreased positivity rate, which is really encouraging. In fact, our most recent positivity rate that we noted on the report from January 21st was down to 7.47%, which is a decrease of about 50% from the previous weeks, with a case rate of 61.7 per 100,000. So that's really good news for the Town of Southampton. I'm not sure if you have any other questions or would like any additional information?
Do we have any questions for Kate?
Just one, Kate. I think, did I read somewhere, I think maybe in the Gazette, that the Vaccination Center for us would probably be Northampton Senior Center?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, the Northampton Senior Center is probably going to be the closest, but they are opening up like the Eastfield Mall and there's some other local vaccine site, but it does seem like the Northampton site would be the closest and most accessible. And those appointments would be, you'd have to schedule them in advance. It's not going to be like a pop-in vaccination clinic.
Yeah, so you've got to call ahead or be online or something? Is that it?
That's correct. And as soon as we have the information from them, we will be distributing that.
I think the, I had gotten an email from our state rep Lindsay Sabadosa yesterday saying that this, the 75s and over will definitely be in this, this coming around as of February 1. So people, I'm encouraging to get in line quickly here. I think the other one, maybe for the south end of town, it might be a little bit easier is over on Whitney Avenue in Hoyoke. I think it's Bay State Hoyoke, maybe? Is that it right?
That's correct. I'm actually getting vaccinated there tomorrow. So again, it's appointment only, but those appointments can be scheduled online and I do think that they will be opening that up probably later this week. They were saying February 1st, so I'm not sure when those, the exact date of those appointments for Whitney Ave will be scheduled.
Great. Thanks.
Caitlin, I just wanted to thank you for your hard work and effort on this and for assuming a leadership role over there. I think you're doing a great job.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a couple, I have a, great. I have a question first and then I just have a comment to, just in the event that you weren't aware, just to maybe give you some perspective, because I've reviewed some minutes over there and this seems to be a topic of discussion consistently. But my first, my question is, is all of your data is over what period of time? Do you have, do you know that, like when you provide the data for the perk tests and for the Title V inspections, is like, do you know the time period that that, that that is over?
Well, just that it was over the past quarter. So just the past three months, but I can get that information for you.
That's fine. And then, you know, the, the topic, you know, the topic of budget is obviously very timely because we're heading into budget season. And I know that you're a newcomer to the Board of Health. We worked on this board in conjunction with the rest of the town and the departments on our present budget, which was very hard to arrive at this past year.
I wondered that.
Okay, there were a lot of cuts, right? And to every department and, you know, school, police, fire, ambulance, town hall, Board of Health, Council on Aging, library. What I just, what I mostly just want to make sure that we convey is that we understand that the Board of Health is focused on their budget and they seem, they seemingly are consistently worried about the cuts that were necessary, that were necessary to their department. I just want to assure you, the cuts to that department were proportional to every other department. And so while that, you know, obviously that hurts. It hurts town hall, it hurts fire, police, EMT, ambulance, Board of Health, COA, school, just keep listing all of the main departments off. Like, it was proportional, right? So there, there seems to be, you know, from my perspective, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but there seems to be an insinuation, at least from the Board of Health, and I'm not sure if it's just misinformed, but like your cuts were in proportion to everybody else on a percentage basis. So I think it's timely that you're having these discussions, but it seems to come up at every meeting and it also seems to come up in a lot of emails that come directed necessarily towards us. And these are hard times that we're in. We faced a very difficult budget year. And so I just want to make sure that that perspective is there. And again, you know, I'm not assuming that you didn't know this or that you did know this. I know that you're a newcomer there. I just wanted to pass that information along because, you know, it, it was fairly done, at least in my opinion. I'm not sure if the rest of the board members agree, but, you know, it was hard. They were hard. It's just, it was what it was. So I just want to make sure that you understand that.
I think we do understand that it was proportional. I just think it was proportional in a time that might have been a little bit, you know, challenging specifically for the Board of Health, but it's challenging for many departments. And so I think we do understand that. And I know that we plan on bringing some more detail to the meetings about our next budget because we want to make sure that we have just as much perspective for the next budget and about expenses. And the only other feedback that I heard from that is that we've been level budgeted for several years and that there's, you know, inflation and other increased costs anticipated with, you know, just the cost of living and cost of expenses for everything. So I think that was, I think that's where that stems from, is that, that it's been level budgeted instead of kind of anticipating the change in, change in year-to-year expenses. But I know we'll be talking about that at our next meeting after the school committee meeting.
Okay.
I just wanted to reaffirm what Matt said. I think the Board of Health budget was treated equal to, it was, not, I don't, not think is a bad word. It was. It was a 4% reduction of every department, every department's budgets for this last year. And I think there's a commitment on our behalf not to treat, to continue to treat every department equally.
Of course.
As opposed to the word proportionately sounds, it's based on your ability to pay. It really wasn't.
It was equal.
Equal 4% across the board. And I want to add to Matt's comments. We appreciate all the information you've provided at this meeting and at, at the prior meeting where you did an update. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was also going to second Matt's comment and just say that the one difference is, even though it was proportional across the board, we were, we were up against the wall on that budget, you know, the state, the numbers weren't in. So we were also trying to be respectful of the fact that Jerry was on vacation, so we did not pull the money out of, the other department head's got a chance to say here, there, and there. So we just didn't want to take it out of the salary line, so we took it out of the expense and that with the expectation, like other department heads, that they would do movement around. And I know that this falls heavily on the Board of Health, but I also think that the Board of Health, because of that, was eligible for more CARES Act funding than some of the other departments. And so there was a salary line under the CARES Act. There was other funds and lines that they were eligible for because their whole focus is Board of Health. And so I think responding to data, I mean, I'll respond if someone says, this is what we're budgeted for, this is unanticipated, this is what we're doing, you know, I mean, you know, you justify it and I'll, you know, go to bat, you know, for you. So that's what I'm looking for, instead of just, we need more hours, we need more money.
Yep. And then Caitlin, I, you know, I hate to correct you on this, but, and I'm happy to source you with this information, but you could also get it just frankly from the accountant's office or even probably our website has it posted. But the, to say that, to say that the Board of Health Department has been level funded for a number of years isn't totally accurate. And so I would encourage you to look at maybe perhaps the last five years and you'll see that it's just frankly not even close to level funded. So with that being said, we can talk, we can talk more about that if you'd like, but I just, I had to correct that because that's just.
No, it's fine. It's good information. I will certainly take a look at that in preparation for our budget discussion at the next meeting.
Well, thanks a lot, Caitlin. We're in this together and I so appreciate your being here and all the question, you know, like we want to work together and we're in the middle of a pandemic and so we all want, you know, Southampton to be healthier and it's good news on the numbers and let's get as many people vaccinated as possible.
Renee, I've just got one more question. Caitlin, I think you mentioned a joint meeting with the school committee. When is that going to be?
We're still trying to, I know that Becky's in the process of reaching out to John to schedule that date. We were thinking maybe February 5th, which is a Friday. Of course, there's a lot of conflicting meetings between all departments, so we were shooting for the end of next week. But that meeting obviously will be posted as soon as we have that information.
Good. And just one last thing. I had a chance, it's the first time I've actually seen anything from the Board of Health posted on our TV slot. I did have a chance to just tune in on the portion that we had for the contact tracing, just to hear how that was going and hear right directly from our, our contact tracer. So that's good to know, just for people to understand. If they want to hear that, it's posted on the video section of our town website. So there is some information there to understand how the contract tracing operation works.
Yeah, so we also, I spoke to Jerry about reaching out to Lucy about posting some minutes from the Board of Health meetings because there's been some feedback that it would be helpful to have more information available. And I think we all agree that that would be helpful. So I know that Jerry plans on doing that if she hasn't already.
Great. Anything else for Caitlin? Thanks so much, Caitlin.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, great. Okay, so Jim, thanks for coming here from the Water Department. Appreciate it. If you could just give us kind of an update on your end.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So Lyman Pond, the water main replacement project there, the contractor has signed the contracts and sending them back to the town. We have an anticipated start date of beginning of April and that project should last about three months, provided the weather is nice in the spring. And our current new buildings are all running well. They've been testing the way the interconnection works with East Hampton to see how the water disperses in our system. And no surprises, everything's been working as it was designed and the water's mixing well. So the buildings are up and running and good.
Right.
We're going to be doing some, looking into increasing our pH. Our pH for our water is a little low, so we are going to add some pH adjustment at the well to bring the pH up slightly, which is going to help with corrosion in copper. And the state, every three years, does a sanitary survey of our water system and they usually come up with a list of 30 or so complaints and things that we have to pay attention to. And they just completed a survey back in November and they were focusing mainly on our manpower and employee retention. So we're supposed to get that report back soon and we'll, I'm sure they're going to be making recommendations for more manpower, which we'll have to figure out somehow to address. So that's always a good punch list from them that we have to take care of. And we just completed a water system emergency update assessment, or updated our emergency assessment plan. The EPA looks at our system and gives us guidelines to take care of disasters. They come up with all kinds of disasters and they, we have to plan for them. So that's been completed. We have a book on file for all kinds of disasters as far as cyber attacks or buildings burning down or possible employees. So that's all been updating, is on the shelf. Other than that, everything's running good and the water's flowing.
Questions for Jim?
Let's keep the water flowing.
Yeah, absolutely.
There was a rumor, Jim, at some point, and maybe it's more than a rumor, about an increase in water bills coming up.
Um, yeah, I don't remember when, exactly when that's set for, but we back earlier had set it so that it was automatic, so that we could keep up with the cost of living increases. So it's going to basically go up 2% every year automatically. And off the top of my head, I think it's next quarter it starts. So this, actually this next billing, this current quarter. And it was minimal because we had a base for quite a few years and our last increase was pretty big. But it's all been based on our rate study, which we updated and got recommendations from engineering firms on where we want to be at. And they recommend the automatic updates, which the DEP also recommends. So that's what we went with.
Okay. Other questions? Jim, I have two questions. Wait, can I, Ed, you all set? Can I ask a question?
Go ahead. You outrank me, Renee, so I'll wait.
Jim, the bridge there on Route 10, the Lyman Bridge, it's supposed to go from Brickyard to Fulmer, right?
Yeah, it starts, and it's ending Brickyard, basically on the corner there in my lawn.
So the pipe is going to come out of the water up underneath the bridge where there already are space for it, so to speak. But the part that goes from other side of the bridge out, is that going to involve road closure at all?
Yeah, so currently, the, the engineers designed it, they designed the water main to go up the northbound travel lane. So when that gets done, that will be a significant road closure. The bridge, maybe it's somewhat of a road closure too, because they're going to be working on the eastern side of the roadway there and, you know, they'll be in the roadway. So we're not sure whether they're going to do stoplights or police or, you know, maybe one stoplight setup to the long way. So it will be disrupted for a certain amount, but the, the next phase would probably be even tighter because it's a much narrower section of road. But we're not planning on that yet.
Yeah, okay.
The current water main that's there runs inside the stone wall. And that's still an option to run it inside the stone wall. On top of that, it's just a harder place to go to. So it's, that area from the corner of Brickyard up to, well, probably till, till, to the green, I don't know, the glazes old house there, up to that house is a difficult little section that needs to be done at some point.
Yeah. Is there a change in the water pipe dimension?
Yeah, it's all over the place there. So the, we have a six-inch line that comes down through the center of town from basically the cemetery all the way down, you know, past Fulmer, past Brickyard and past, just past my house, it turns to a 12-inch pipe that was put in in the 70s.
Goes from six to 12?
The hill, yeah.
Six to 12 up the hill?
Six to 12. And actually, it's two, two inches under the bridge. So.
Wow.
Two inches.
Yeah, that's why we're replacing.
Wow.
So the, you know, the, the, the new line is going to be 12-inch, I believe, which is going to make water flow better. We have a somewhat of a flow issue up towards Valley Road where.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Lot of flow.
I mean, just conceptual, can I just ask this? Maybe I just want to know about this. I mean, conceptually, you should go from wider diameter to smaller diameter, right? The further away you get?
Yeah. So probably when the big pipe was put in back in the 70s, they were probably thinking that maybe we'd be getting water from the Hoyoke Transmission Main, which, you know, was the plan back then. But with the regulations, the Hoyoke water is not as desirable as the East Hampton water and our own well water.
Yep.
So again, the system, there is a lot of divergence in planning there. Things have been planned for one thing and then switched to another. But we, you know, the 12-inch main, it probably is not a bad idea up there because there is a potential location of another water storage tank along Route 10 between Valley and Brickyard. So that would help out to that. So that's all considerations in the system. And, and the 12-inch line is fed around another way to the other part of Valley.
Okay, cool.
The other question I had is, we're about to put together the MVP Committee, which is the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Committee, and it focuses on climate change, flooding, you know, whatever. And it also, I think the master plan, one of the highest scores on the citizen survey was good water quality. So I was just wondering, since you just put together this emergency plan, thinking about all kinds of terrible possibilities, is there anything that, you know, speaks, you know, to something that would be, something that we should consider doing as a community to minimize or mitigate any risk that might be there relative to the water?
Well, I haven't read the plan yet, but, you know, it has all the, all the, you know, disasters in there and it gives you scenarios on how to handle it. And, you know, as far as, you know, having money in our reserve fund and having manpower and having, you know, backup available. So, you know, it's all in there and it would probably apply well to that, to be part of that plan.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim?
Jim, do you?
I'm sorry.
So, you know, when the contractor has to start on that project?
Um, the current plan is the beginning of April is what Tom told me. But the, the contracts are back to town this week, I believe, or next week to sign. And as soon as we sign them, there'll be a pre-construction meeting and that'll be all planned out. But the, the schedule was for the beginning of April and for 90-day job.
Okay.
So my route, my route to the town, my route to the town is either Moosebrook So my route, my route to the town, my route to the town is either Moosebrook or Strong Road. So my only request is let's not do both bridges at the same time.
Well, there's only certain times there's a lot of traffic on Route 10 and most of it is, you know, from four to six o'clock at night. So.
Yeah. All right, Jim, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Just to follow up on one more piece, it's just, I do want to confirm that this current quarter that we are in is the quarter that the rate increase will start with the Water Department with their billings. When they get billed this month, this quarter, that new rate will be decided.
I'm 90%, I'm 90% sure of that. I'm not, I'm not completely positive. I could get you that answer tomorrow if you want.
I, I, I'm sure of it. How's that?
Okay, you are. Okay. Is that what you were saying? Okay.
Yeah. No, that, that, because that's what, when Tom had me put it on the website, that's what he had said.
So, yeah.
Any other questions for Jim? Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Trying to get back to the agenda here. The next thing I imagine is the reports. Welcome, John, by the way.
Oh, he's muted. I tried to unmute him. Try again.
Yep. Thanks. The roads out there are pretty bad.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why we've excused Randall from his report on the transfer station so he could work on the roads. And John, in your absence, we also thanked you for all your service to the Select Board, acknowledging that this is your last meeting. So can't thank you enough for all your time here, especially while working full time and all the extra help since you've retired with hiring and disability, you know, all the work that you've done. We're really appreciative.
Well, that's good. And I was kind of thinking about this week, what Matt said last week about, you know, everybody that's on a committee or on a board or something like that, that they try to put time in to help the town and get something done. But there's, you know, we put in a lot of time, but every board member and every committee member puts in a lot of time. And it's not just FaceTime on Zoom because we probably spend more time outside this meeting than we do. But it's, it's been interesting, challenging and frustrating all rolled up into one. And hopefully, the, all the time put on the finance committee and the Select Board had a couple of high points along the way. So.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Is there, is there a virtual cake here?
There should be. There really should be. Certainly earned cake, that's for sure.
Just, just, just your eyes and picture it, John.
What was that?
Just close your eyes and picture that cake.
Really? Well, thank you for those nice words.
Yeah. Okay, so we're up to Select Board reports. Who would like to start?
Hey, buddy?
I can.
Oh, go ahead, Matt. Go ahead.
I mean, my updates are relatively quick. Both schools continue in their path towards trying to get more, more kiddos in school. You know, Hampshire Regional has stayed the course with things, which has been great. Norris, you know, had the, had the brief hiatus after the holidays, after both holidays, really. But they went back, they've actually brought more kids back now. So as of yesterday, they, they have preschool K1 and 2 in four full days per week with the Wednesday day off. And then the grades three through six remain in hybrid with, you know, AA being Monday, Tuesday, and BB being Thursday and Friday. They also started what they're, you know, we have all these new terms in COVID times, but they're, it's not called synchronous learning, it's called, now I'm going to blank on this term. It's basically side-by-side learning. That's what it's called. Sorry. So side-by-side learning is where, as what they've been doing, just, I'll just explain what they've been doing. So the AA group has been receiving in-person learning on Monday and Tuesday. Then they go home Wednesday through Friday, while the BB group comes in on Thursday and Friday. They receive the same teaching that the AA group got earlier in the week. With side-by-side learning, you can have continuous learning throughout the entire week and you don't have to repeat learning for the two different cohorts. So, you know, the teacher just teaches straight through. And the kiddos that are at home receive the Zoom feed and are participating in the class, the live classroom via Zoom. And then conversely, when they switch out, it's, you know, the learning continues and the BB group gets continuous learning. So basically, you get five days of learning instead of, say, say two or three and you're, you know, making more progress. So, so they've instituted that this week. And I haven't gotten an update as to how well that's been going, but it was negotiated and seemed, and seems to be being accepted by teachers' parents, administration and alike. And it was, you know, supported. So hopefully, it's going well. I'm sure there's some kinks and some learning curves and everything and some struggles, but we'll get better from it. And that's really it. I mean, Hampshire Regional continues to talk about their budget. They are very well aware of the predicaments that it's not just our town, as in there's a couple of other towns that have the same type of budget scenario that we're, that we're looking at. And so they're keenly aware of that. And they're, they're, they're working towards, you know, the version of their budget that they're going to submit. And I think that it's going, I mean, I'm hoping that it's going to be modest.
Yes, a question, Matt. On the Norris, going back to Norris, the kids that are doing it via Zoom, is a classroom teacher able to see these kids on a large screen somewhere?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know the exact specifics of that, but I, my understanding is that there is, there is the ability to participate through it. So it's not just, you know, it's not just a feed that they're, you know, basically.
Listening, listening.
Yeah, they're not anonymous.
That's, that's pretty cool. Because basically, they're in class every day that way.
It's tough. I mean, you know, it's worth, look, these are, these are tough times on pretty much everybody. But I mean, what, what the teachers are going through to pull this off is, you know, is quite the feat. I mean, I, I can't imagine having to teach a live classroom and then also focus on a computer screen to make sure you're kind of what they coin now as being center screen like I am right now, as opposed to like this, where you can hear my voice, but you can't see my mouth. I mean, there's so much to focus on now. So like, you know, kudos to the teachers for working through this in these tough times. I mean, the kids certainly need every bit of what adults can provide to them. You know, they're innocent in this. But I mean, it's, it's certainly an overwhelming amount of work. Like, you know, so, but we're making progress.
Sounds, sounds like they're being creative, which is great.
Matt, I have a question for both Norris students and Hampshire Regional students. I know that there are some residences that aren't like within the bandwidth and some are challenged with internet access. Has that all been resolved?
I, so we, that hasn't come up at many, many meetings recently. I know that they've been provided, that those students, and this was, this was a while ago that I, that I know this from. So I imagine that it still continues. But they were provided hotspots that do have an internet signal. Of course, they could travel for it because the Wi-Fi has been upgraded in all these places. But I believe, my understanding is, is that internet, while it is an issue in some of these hill towns and in some of these remote areas, I think, all of that has been able to be either mitigated by in-person instruction or, and/or or a combination thereof of hotspot providing and some type of internet service that's outside of the bounds of, you know, the infrastructure, like telephone wires and cable wires and stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Rainey's cut off of the mic. Ed. Hence the awkward silence.
Yeah, my dog was barking because my husband just got home. So I just muted myself. I didn't realize I couldn't unmute myself. Thank you. Thanks. Any, any other questions for Matt? Who's next? Thanks, Matt.
Okay, I'll go. It's, it's going to be short. The PQB Personnel Policies and Procedures Board met on January 14th and they approved the PCF for Tracy Lamica, Lamica, as the Administrative Assistant for the Treasure Collector Office. And she began employment with the town on January 20th. They're scheduled to have another meeting this Thursday, the 28th at 6 o'clock. Community preservation has not met for a couple of months, but we have scheduled our next meeting for February 3rd at 5:30. That's via Zoom. And for people who want to tune that, tune in, they're certainly welcome. And I'm also liaison to the ZBA, the zoning board. And they haven't, they haven't met. And then I am aware of, there's, there's no meeting scheduled in the foreseeable future.
Any questions for Francine? Thanks, Francine. Chris or John? You're muted, John.
Yeah, significantly two items I have are on the agenda, so I'll just wait for those.
All right, sounds good. Chris?
Yep, just a couple of things. The Board of Assessors met last evening, basically routine, routine business, taking care of motor vehicle abatements and various other abatements, veterans and other senior abatement requests. Talked about a couple of chapter properties. There's a small parcel of around, between six and seven acres, I believe, over on East Street that's actually going to be going into Chapter 61B. And then a couple of, a couple of properties, I think I mentioned them last time, that were coming, well, changing hands probably and had been under forestry plan. So we've just notified, notified them if they intend to change use, that they have to understand that they have the right of first refusal requirement. So that's just been a notification, nothing, no action yet at this point in time. But those are just some basic properties we've talked about. And then probably for Khan Com, they met actually, oh gosh, I think that was on the 11th, if I'm not mistaken. And for once, we didn't actually have any hearings or anybody presenting any NOIs or anything. That was just the first time I've ever had a meeting before we've not had somebody come and request some sort of action here. So we spent more time talking about just the various stewardship projects, noting in particular, oddly enough, that Wolf Hill Sanctuary, which the town had actually acquired back in, I think, 2009, if I remember. At that time, they had done kind of a baseline document of what the conservation properties and values were. And since then, there's been no, no real action on that. So there was a thought that we probably ought to do a subsequent kind of monitoring report and get an update in terms of, you know, the current conditions up at Wolf Hill. So there was a motion made and a plan made to have someone from Conservation Works, Pete Westover, probably carry out that study and just get us up to date in terms of abiding by conservation restriction requirements and reporting on some of those. The forestry work that had been done up on the, on Palmory Mountain has taken a little bit of a hiatus. They, you know, with the, with the weather now, they're kind of waiting until spring to finish off their, their activity up there. But the local logger who comes out of, well, the forestry guy comes out of West Hampton, and I believe the loggers from that area as well. But they, they will go back in the spring and finish up. And then their next plan is to move over to the Alice Brown area on Pleasant Street and do some trimming of trees and thinning out of trees, trees that are falling down that are, they're really dangerous, et cetera. So there'll be some continued work there. And then we talked about the Mass Trails Grant, two parts of that. As you know, we received the grant for the $50,000 for the first part of the Manhan Meadows Sanctuary rehabilitation. Since then, there's been a couple of donations made toward that from, I believe I've mentioned before, Walmart and East Hampton Savings Bank. We've recently also gotten some funds from the Women's Club and the Friends of the Council on Aging. So there have been some donations put in there that will go toward benches or kiosks or signage or something along that line, which is very nice. We're in the process now, I believe, the real big step is to get the, the conservation, the construction work, whatever the design work, et cetera, out to bid. And so I know it's been talking to Diana and Marla about that. And we really need to get that underway because we're hoping to use the, the Student Youth, sorry, Student, hello, Student Conservation Association, SCA. We're trying to recommend they, they be involved and they, they would have to be part of the sort of bidder's plan, I guess, to know that we would like to see them included. And they are also working on developing all their schedules for the year already. So we need to really be sure that we don't leave them behind and get too late on our process here. What else? I think that's pretty much the idea. The second part of the Manhan Meadows project, which is the replacement of the suspension bridge, that application has gone in this past week. Diana completed that, that application. And so that has now been submitted to Mass Trails for the second portion, second phase of Manhan Meadows. So we'll hope that that gets approved. And I think that's pretty much the key points.
Any questions for Chris? Chris, I just had one question. And that is, the vote has approved using, the idea of using forest cutting, the funds from that to turn around. And you want to just mention that about the Palmory Mountain?
Yeah, right. That's true. That, that did happen. I wish, I was meant to verify the figure and I'm sorry I did not, in terms of how much was actually received. But we, with the forestry plan and the work that's been up, done up there, the selling of the timber comes back to, to the, to the value of that comes back to the town. So there's a, a number of dollars that have been received from, from that action, which will go toward, can only be put toward that property. It can't be used for other conservation properties in town. It's only for there to help develop the trails now and whatever else we want to do up on the mountain to make that a real active trail site. So I'm, I'm thinking it's, it's, I'm not sure I really want to say, but it's at least, it's around $10,000 easily, if not more. I can clarify that next time. But it's an appreciable mountain that will help just keep that as a, as a property that can be, can hopefully be developed and maintained as well. And there actually, along with that Student Conservation Association on Manhan, there was some interest about maybe having some of those students, they're basically student conservation persons who are very interested in environment and outdoor activities. They might be available to do a summer project for us. And if so, we were thinking about putting them up on the mountain to help start up with some trails and so forth up there. So we may have some of them around and we'll know more about that in a few weeks, hopefully, if we get on their, on their schedule. But I think it would be a great idea.
Great. Thanks. I just want people to know that the forest cutting, after approved, this was the first opportunity to realize some funds from that.
It is. And I will verify the figure. I'm sorry, I forgot to do that.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Kate already reported on the Board of Health. They met last Wednesday. And Kate offered a lot of great suggestions and good communication between the Select Board and the schools. And Sharon Hart did a presentation on case tracing. So just a reminder to everybody that, you know, we're not out of the woods yet. So people, I know the vaccine, the next step is people getting vaccinated. But in the meantime, everybody still has to observe the state guidance around gathering and hand washing and distancing and all that. But that was really interesting to hear her report on that. The Council on Aging, I already reported last time because they met at the beginning of the month. But I just wanted to mention that I did attend a Friends annual meeting. And the Friends of the COA is similar to the Friends of Open Space, Friends of the Library. Their mission is to provide financial and operational support for the Council on Aging. And just want to say thank you to the Friends who are always there to support the town and the seniors. And lastly, about the Council on Aging, I just wanted to mention that there was a accident involving the van, the, the van that's used, Council on Aging van. And thankfully, nobody was hurt. And it is expected that the, the funds to repair it will be covered by insurance. For those of you that don't know, it is a Franklin Regional Transportation Authority van, and they have already provided a substitute. So there were no rides that were missed. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that Joan Lenahan, who's the Director of the Senior Center, this Friday is actually being recognized. She has passed the certification for Senior Senate Directors, which is a state certification. So congratulations to Joan. I'll be jumping on that Zoom acknowledgement. And then Open Space met last Thursday. The different committees reported. We discussed grant projects and opportunities. We also, there's a project that's in draft format right now, possibly. We also, there's a project that's in draft format right now, possibly providing the community with more education about the Barnes Aquaphor. I think I mentioned that before. We continue to review lands in town, various people are interested in conserving which parcels are desirable. And then there was a representative at the meeting from the Friends of Open Space, which Friends of Open Space, which is a new 501(c)(3) organization to support conservation efforts in Southampton. So anyway, a lot of good work being done in terms of conservation and trails. Any questions? All right. So Ed, I guess you're up next with the Town Administrator Report.
And some of it's already been covered, but I'll briefly cover some of it again. We have received notification from the Hawaii Local 98 Union that they would like to enter into negotiations for a successor collective bargaining agreement. And as Kate said, the Board of Health is awaiting the details for these two vaccinations, which will include individuals over the age of 75, which is scheduled to begin on February 2nd. As soon as they receive the details for this, they will be working with the COA to do direct mailings to the seniors, placing the, and placing information on our town website, and also placing an article in the Gazette. We will be working with the City of Northampton, and those vaccinations for COVID-19 are scheduled to be at the Northampton Senior Center. So, and, you know, people don't have to go there, you know, they, they can partake of any of the other centers that are available or any of the pharmacies, but that's where the information that will be sending out will be involved. And then just to let the Select Board know, Hackworth Security installed the new security system, which was approved, the capital article, the Edwards Public Library today, so that's now up and running. Let's see. And to let you know that a letter received requesting a door-to-door solicitation be allowed for smaller panel systems here in Southampton has been forwarded to KP Law for their opinion on whether we have any ability to ban that type of activity due to COVID or not. So, and one of their suggestions is that we do revisit our solicitation bylaw. They said they had made a recommendation to the town to actually update that probably about maybe four years, four or five years ago. So they are recommending that. And I'll let, let the Board know as soon as I hear anything as far as from KP Law, the particulars of if we do have any ability in any way to not allow door-to-door solicitation while the pandemic's going on. And then also to let you know, our town custodial, custodian will be out on leave for approximately three weeks, starting the end of this week. And we have arranged for a cleaning company to come in and perform the cleaning and other associated duties, both at the library and here at Town Hall until he returns. So they will be starting at both locations beginning of next week. And then upcoming Select Board meetings for February are the 9th and the 23rd.
Thanks, Ed. Questions for Ed?
Yep.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, not really a question, I just wanted to add, I just got a note from, from Marla, I just wanted to give the information out there. The amount on the, the logging from Palmory Meadow, Palmory Mountain, sorry, is $19,104.
Oh, that's great.
Quite, quite good. So that was a pretty good sale, given, given the timber market. And, you know, that's, that's not bad at all. So that will be used again only for Palmory, Palmory Mountain. And then after we're done with this, I would like to make just a comment on the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee.
Oh, right, right, right. Thank you for reminding me about that. Any other questions from the Select Board for Ed? Ed, doesn't the custodian also do the police station?
He does, but chillingly, we're said that they were all, would be all set for this period, that they could take care of it themselves.
Okay. Okay. Lucy, did you have a question for Ed? Are you, I think you have to be unmuted.
She can unmute, should be able to unmute herself.
I, I did, sorry. Um, Ed, I'm sorry, going back a little bit to appointments and resignations, is that okay, Maureen?
What's that?
To go back to appointments and resignations?
Were you talking about the cultural council?
Yeah, yeah.
That's being covered under other business that can't wait until the next, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Because it wasn't on the agenda under that item, so that's the only other option we have.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for Ed's TA report? If not, Chris, we want to go ahead and give the report on the Ad-Hoc Grants Committee?
Yeah, thanks. Just a very short one. We're in the final stages of finishing the application. Again, this will be an application to Mass Trails, but as I mentioned last time, I believe, we're putting in a grant application to try to acquire the railroad right of way, which has been promised in sorts, promised in quotes, in a letter of intent from the railroad between the letter of intent, sorry, letter of intent from the railroad and then with the town back in about 2018. So we're going to try and make good on it and put it in the application. The Grants Committee has been meeting and working on Google Docs in between times, trying to add in our multiple committee edits here. And we have a final meeting tomorrow to go over what's there. And with a little luck and whatever, I will get it entered in and sent away on Thursday ahead of the deadline. But we're requesting $300,000, which is still not the full purchase price. The purchase price in the letter of intent from the railroad is $340,000. But we can only request up to 300,000, and then there has to be at least a 20% match as well of the total project cost. So we'll have 300,000 request of Mass Trails, and then about 75,000 that we have to put up as our share, which will have to come from another grant. Or as we talk about budgeting, we've got to figure out how to do it. We cannot use CPC monies, unfortunately, for the acquisition of the railroad right away.
Not right now.
Not right now. So we're going to get that application in, we won't know anything about it most likely until July. But that one will be at least in play, and we'll move on to whatever's next. And in terms of deadlines, we've gotten two or three things that crossed our paths in the last couple of weeks of deadlines coming up in February, March. So we'll take a look and see if there's anything relevant. I know Parks was thinking about something and a couple of other smaller ones maybe that we might help with. But anybody that knows of grant opportunities and doesn't have time to, to work on them, let the committee know, and we'll see if we can help.
Thank you. Ed, do you want to add to that? I know you're a part of the committee, too.
No, I, I would say that, you know, the committee's done a great job. It's been a lot of research, and people have filled in pieces of the grant, you know, here and there, we've shared ideas. So I think it's been actually very productive for this. We will, you know, definitely cross our, our fingers. Chris exchanged a couple of emails with me today on some of the timeline and the budgetary issues. So it'll be interesting, because, you know, one of the conversations we had today, you know, back and forth via, via email or text was that, okay, how is the best way to, you know, go out this? Because we won't find out if we actually get the grant until after the annual town meeting's normal date. Usually have the annual town meeting in May. I think the grant release date's in July. So Chris and I were talking a little bit today about, well, okay, so do we need to plan a little bit ahead of time and put the article on the May Annual Town Meeting that would accept the grant? Which we'd have to spend a little bit of amount of money as far as having KP help us draft the, the article for that? Or do we say, okay, we're going to wait until we actually know we have the grant? And then follow up with, for a special town meeting? And hopefully, the pandemic will have been, gone by then, and we can have a special town meeting under normal circumstances and in a, shall we say, not have to wait an extended period of time for it. So it'll, it'll be a little bit, little bit interesting. And then it really doesn't tie to the grant, but you know that part of the Transportation Bond Bill that was approved through the legislature and signed by the governor actually has $875,000 in it as an earmark for Southampton to be utilized for the Greenway and the East Street roadway. I intend to do that. A lot of those earmarks do not get, you know, funded as a bond, but I'm going to see what we can do if we can get both portions of that perhaps released for us through the governor's office, or at, at least one, which if we can get the $370,000. When sent suggestions, along the Senator Vailas, it suggested 375,000 for the purchase of the Greenway right of way and $500,000 for the design of the East Street roadway. So we'll see what we can get out of that, too, and maybe we will be able to tap into that funding also.
Right, yep. And just a final shout out to Paul Forgot from the Greenway Committee for being part of this whole process. He's been very instrumental in digging up old documents and providing some of the past history. And so we're very glad that he was able to join us and provide all that input. So thanks.
Any questions for Chris or Ed? You know, when we were purchasing the Clearwater Woodland property, we went to town meeting with two proposals. One would be, should we get the 400,000? Would you support, you know, blah, blah, blah? And if we didn't, would you want to put up the money for this? So it gave the voters an opportunity to say, yes, I support it so long as we get a grant. So that would be another option in terms of that time lag.
Yeah, good point.
Yes, good point.
So do we have the option, I'm just thinking about Lucy hanging on for a pretty long agenda here, do we have the option of doing the cultural council, or does it have to rest with the other business?
If the Select Board so wanted to, they could move that up.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. So Lucy, I'll, I'll bring you in on this. We did get some paperwork on a couple of the people, where there are only two appointments, so were there more?
There were more.
There, yeah, there's one, one reappointment, which would be Linda Brasshead, reappointment to the Cultural Council, which should be to, if I do my math right, to June 30th, 2024. And then there are three appointments. And the third one I put into the Dropbox also, but you've got...
Robert Zeb, Deana McFadden, and Jody Loud.
Deana McFadden from 32 Blumer Road. Jody Land from Loud, 49 Leddin Road. And Robert Zemba from 23 Friar Road. And all of those would be new appointments of those three, and they would also be to June 30th, 2024.
Okay, can I have a motion then to approve those three appointments to the Cultural Council?
I'll move to approve the three candidates and the continuation of the fourth, I guess.
Okay.
Reappointment.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, I think Matt got in there. So Francine and then Matt, could Lucy or Ed speak to exactly the Cultural Council? And, you know, why it was important to actually, you know, get it on this, this week's agenda? And what the charge of this committee is? I don't, I just think it would be helpful for people to know.
Well, the committee, the Cultural Council, it's a cultural council. We, it's a group, and the state appropriates money to us. We get a grant every year. And we send out letters and make it be known that there is funding out there. It's a reimbursement program, so the events have to happen first, then the applicant has to apply for reimbursement, and the group meets to appropriate as much, you know, funding as we can.
Okay, great.
What's the amount of the grants?
Well, it's gone up. It was, it was around 4,200 when I first started, then now this year we've gotten, I think it was 5,700 this year.
As a total.
Can I ask about?
Each year goes up.
Can I ask about some of the events that they sponsor?
Um, uh, Summer Concert Series, Hampshire Regional High School Musical, a lot of Council on Aging stuff. I'm trying to think, Community Chorus. I'm just trying to think. We, we have 18 applicants this year, so...
Anybody ever, Lucy, or is it just on my end?
I don't know. I think you're frozen, Maureen, yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah. The Council meets once a year, so, and because of COVID, you know, the state has, you know, been a little bit lenient and given us time, but we have to have a meeting so we can get our reports done, so.
Good. It might be, might be good, if, if you could, to just put up like last year's grant winners or something on the website, just so people know that it's out there?
We could do that. We could do that, yeah.
When my kids were little, they used to do a really cool arts camp at Connet. I don't know if there's programming for children, too, but historically, there has been.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's whoever wants to apply can apply, and, you know, so I wish I could think of some of the other things. I mean, we've, we've done a...
I think, I think the library did a couple of programs last year.
Yeah. We, we cover the library free passes, museum passes. We cover that. So, yeah, it's, it's a good program.
I know the, the town concerts were very popular.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. It's a nice addition to the, you know, culture of Southampton.
Yeah, we actually, when, a couple of years ago, we actually got a, a banner for the Cultural Council to display at events. So it was displayed.
Great.
So...
That's great.
Good to know.
Thanks for that information. I really appreciate that. And so is there a, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
This one.
Well, I.
All in.
Martin, I.
And Broden, I.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Lucy.
I appreciate, we appreciate.
Great. Okay, so now we can move on to the old business. The first is the town accountant position update.
Do you want to grab it, Ed? Do you want me to?
No, no, I'm happy to. Mr. Martin and I have continued to have interviews for the candidates that we have received. There are still a few candidates in Indeed that have not finished their assessment to date, but of the candidates that we have spoken with and interviewed, I believe there are two standouts at this point in time that Mr. Martin and I would like to bring forward to the Select Board for an interview by the Select Board. And while that's being set up, if anybody that has applied to Indeed that finishes their assessment, that's highly proficient or expert, I would ask that Select Board for maybe another week would allow Mr. Martin to work to interview any other candidates that came in. that came in that seemed to be outstanding to see if we might want to add a third individual to that recommendation to come for the select board. And then I'd ask the select board to either at one of their regular meetings or a special meeting, have a Zoom interview with those potential candidates.
Want to add anything, John?
Yeah, I'd want double the rate of pay as I get now, Rainey.
And I recommend it for.
Yeah, I would be glad to, and I don't know if you want to call it a consultant or ad hoc or whatever to continue to work with it and get this done and, you know, if you guys are okay with that.
Anybody ask Mrs. Martin?
That'd be great.
I heard that in the background.
Oh, did you hear that, Chris?
Yolded, I think. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
That's why I have it on mute.
Can I ask where we are at with the interim? How long has she been in the position?
I believe it is five weeks this week.
And the position is interim for 12 weeks, correct?
Well, actually, in this particular case, we ended up hiring a vendor, so I think it can actually go along this.
Right, that's correct. Okay. So does that sound like a, okay, plan? So are we talking about as early as possibly next meeting, two weeks from now?
Yeah, I would think you could. Yeah, if you wanted to, you could even have a special meeting just for that, because I think we've got two ready to go.
Okay. So I imagine Ed can keep us in the loop in terms of how many there would be. I think it would be a good idea if the select board all thought of the either one or two questions so that we would consistently know. I don't know, traditionally, do you give the candidate questions beforehand for like a second interview or do you just on the spot? On the spot?
My experience is on the spot.
Okay.
The, the, the questions should be consistent between.
Right, right.
Whether it's two, two or three candidates, they should not differ. Yeah, I think I was one of those ones that was involved in providing the candidates with questions upfront, and I had never seen that done before, so.
Oh, I can go all the time, and I think it makes, especially if it's going to be a public thing, it makes it an advantage for anybody that comes after. Like, if it's, you know, publicized and anybody that's a second, third, or fourth candidate can just watch it and then, you know what I mean? So that's, that's one of the advantages of having them have the questions beforehand.
I mean, that's a good point, Rainey, especially if we're going to keep this open just in case, so I would think that would be good. I'd be okay with that.
You know, a lot of times I ask questions such as, can you give an example of a situation that you were involved with that your talents really shone through? Can you conversely give me an example of a time when things didn't go the way you had hoped and what did you learn from or what would you do differently? Sometimes that takes a little bit of forethought.
You know, it's interesting, and you always get a question during interview, what are your strong points and what are your, your weak points or something similar? We've had a couple of candidates we asked for the strong points and we went to the, the weak points, and it was, oh, didn't know you were going to ask that. I mean, of two questions at an interview, those are the two you're going to get asked, you know?
Right. Okay, so that, that sounds like a plan. Glad there are a couple of strong people and we'll see if there's another one. And Ed, you can let us know, and if it works to be part of the next select board meeting, that would be great, if people can think about questions. So were you going to show up just with questions and have it be consistent? Are people, is that what the plan is?
Look, I'd probably recommend send me, send me the questions. I can put them into a, you know, a document that everybody's got, so.
Yeah, just in case there's overlap or something. Francine?
Right.
I just want to ask, can we get the resumes before we prepare the questions so that we might be thinking a little more?
I, I was, I was going to say I will do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Do we not want to try a special meeting to do this? Just, just have this on the agenda and do it? I mean, why wait another two weeks?
This could be about an hour each, I would think, right?
Yeah. I mean, why, why take up a select board meeting for that? I mean, let's do a special. I know it's, you know, it's important.
Me up. Chris. I'm kidding.
I know. I just, I think it's, you know, it's important and I think, you know, we've been waiting. We need to, we need to move and, you know.
I know.
It would make the agenda too, it would make the meeting too long otherwise.
Yeah, I think so, too. That's my fear, yeah.
Okay, so are we going to, are you going to come up with a date where no more applications after this date? Or are you just?
Yeah, I would probably say we'll cut it off like Monday or Tuesday next week.
Okay.
Can I, Rainey, can I go back? Your idea of putting the questions out there now, can we get kind of a sense if the others like that, too? Because I think it lets them know what the questions are, but also, once they answer a question, you can do follow-ups and kind of get more information. And I think you're right, it would be fair. If we're going to keep this open, maybe those should be out there. So I would vote to put the questions out before the candidates come in.
Okay, so if everybody could just think of either one or two questions that you'd want to ask, submit them to Ed. If there's double, if there's overlap, then Ed can just, you know, combine them and then send it out to us along with the resumes. So if by the, by the end of the week, if people could just send a question or two to Ed, we'll put this all together and interview, and then we'll try to put together a separate meeting.
How many questions do you think total, Rainey?
I was going to say one or two apiece so that there's not more than 10.
Okay. Makes sense.
Okay. All right.
Do you want to target sometime towards the end of next week as the special meeting?
That probably works.
Yeah. We could probably come up with a tentative idea, right? Confirm the availability of candidates, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I could do any, I mean, can't do much of anything anymore anyway, so. I mean, the end of next week would work.
Okay.
Are people free on Thursday? The, was it the fifth?
The fourth.
Fourth?
I can't do the fourth, my son's 30th birthday, so we got.
Okay.
Over the hill.
Yeah, that's big.
That just means I'm getting older.
What about the third, then?
Hell, yeah.
Yeah, that would work.
Do we think we do these in the evening or during the day sometime? Afternoon or evening?
I would say evening.
Okay.
I recommend evening.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing on the third is the planning board by the looks, in terms of schedule, and maybe CPC, though.
CPC meets at 5:30.
Yeah.
Well, what about the second? I mean, we got to give them enough time, though, to find out if they're available. So do we want to say the second or the third, depending on their schedule?
Yeah. Yeah.
But, and do we want them both on the same day or does it matter?
I, I would prefer to see them on the same day. I think that proximity, you know, your, your head's going in the same direction.
Yeah.
In all fairness to the candidates.
So, okay.
It might be trickier if we have three, just time-wise, but maybe we can shoot for not necessarily a full hour, but possibly 45 minutes apiece, just to keep it so it's not a three-hour meeting.
Right.
I, I guess my, my only thought on everything is this is a key position, so we want to make sure we have enough time, you know?
Okay. Well, I talked to you for doing the first interview, so we're just going along with your recommendations.
Let me interject this, what, what Chris just reminded me, between the planning board meeting and the CPC meeting, both on the third, we don't have a Zoom account available to do interviews on the third.
So it's the second or the fourth? Well, it's not the fourth because John can't make it the fourth.
I mean, is it Friday out of the question or?
No.
No.
It's fine.
I'm fine with Friday.
Okay. Okay.
That would work for me, that's okay.
All right, so we're saying question Wednesday, question Friday? Or, yeah?
Well, wait a minute, Ed just said the third is not good.
Wednesday wouldn't work, so Tuesday, Friday?
Third, we don't have the Zoom account.
Yeah.
So maybe Tuesday or Friday?
Yes.
I'd say Friday. Well, actually, Tuesday's okay, actually, too. Yeah, either one, actually.
Same with me.
Okay. So applications will be closed as of Monday. People submit their questions as of, let's say, Monday, and that we plan the interviews for Tuesday or Friday or both. Yeah, sound all right? Good.
Only thing is, if the questions are on Monday and the interviews turn out to be Tuesday.
Yeah.
So can we say?
Questions by Friday?
Yeah, shoot for Friday for the interviews.
What's that?
Shoot for, shoot for Friday the 5th for the interviews.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, so everything in by Monday and then interviews by Friday. Good. Sounds good. So anything else on the town accountant position? So what's next on the agenda? I'm switching between documents here. Okay.
I got it. Big FY close.
Yes, and that's just about completed. Vicki just wants to double-check a couple of items. She's actually going to come in tomorrow, do that, and unless, she's going to double-check those, and then unless DeMar has any issues with what she's submitted so far, the portion of the actual close should be completed as of tomorrow.
Okay, and then where does that information get sent?
It gets sent to the DLS.
Okay.
For the local services.
That's how they end up generating the numbers for us in terms of free cash and such?
Yeah, free cash is a, another portion of that, which she will also submit, but fiscal year close in itself closes the, actually closes the books and actually lets the calculations for free cash be done.
Okay. Any questions about the close? Okay, assistant accountant position. Last time I think we talked about getting it out there on Indeed or?
Yes.
Yeah, and haven't really received anything back for candidates. Jen Day sent me over some of the candidates that had applied for some of her positions as interests, so we'll see, see what comes about, and I'm, I'm happy that we're moving forward with the town accountant position. Hopefully, we'll have someone in place that can also partake of any interviews for the assistant town accountant position.
Yeah. Any questions about that? Okay, disability short and long-term update. I believe there is an update on that.
Yeah. Did everybody get a copy of the information? Good. Okay, so I was, I was working with Jim Russell, all of the Standard Insurance Company, was the vendor that originally submitted to the RFP, but didn't realize that the questions were going to be loaded up on the website, so they didn't go there and see the responses and thus they didn't bid on the original round. So you folks gave me permission to speak with them on a one-to-one basis, so we went back and forth. Lucy and Ed provided some information that we gave them, and he came up with a couple of proposals. And before we even get into them, what, what I recommend is that at the next meeting, you have Jim come in and give the explanation, because this is a bit too complicated, you know, to, for me to go over, because I don't understand it 100%. And I think the professional doing it would make a lot of sense. But he did quote short-term disability to provide a 60% income replacement and with the option that the town may want to supplement it to 75%. They would do the claims determination, so they would decide which claims fit the profile that we selected. And there's some elimination period of 14 days. For instance, if you don't want the employee to start collecting short-term right away, you could put 14 days, then they would have to use their sick time benefit to supplement the first 14 days. And we could then have to change our sick time benefit to maybe say you could accrue up to 14 days. And the reasoning for that is that if you go out on a short-term disability, you're going to need that 14-day period in between. Long-term, they quoted employer-paid and a voluntary plan. Both would pick up when short-term disability benefits end at the end of the 180-day, which is six months, plans would replace 60% of income. And they also quoted a life insurance plan just for our review, and it provides $25,000 benefit to the beneficiary employee, and the employee could choose to buy it or not. They're just offering a low-cost life insurance plan. So I think we've got some good options here, finally. The key is, do we want to go ahead? And once we have him in here, we want to go ahead and set up a budget for that and change our policy. And I think, at least thinking back, that 26-week policy that we have is, is not a good policy for the town or the departments. And what we want to do is replace it with something that doesn't hinder the employer or take away a big benefit from the employee. So kind of a win-win situation is what we're looking at. So this has, you know, the potential for, for doing that, saving the town money. And more importantly, the department head doesn't have to worry about if an employee goes off for 26 weeks, where do they get the money under budget from? Because it comes from a centralized fund.
Right.
And the other thing I like about it is that the, there would be the management of that case.
Right.
As opposed to it falling on the department head or Ed.
It's done by a professional who does this, yes.
Well, that sounds great. I mean, I'd like to, this just came in this morning, so I'd like to just read it over and talk to a couple of people about it, and then it does make sense to have a presentation by Jim once we get a chance to kind of read through and understand this. I'm just wondering whether or not, is, are the handouts that you used, you know, such as what, for example, historically we have paid for disability over the past like five, seven years? I mean, are those documents readily available, John?
Yeah, we, we gave those to Jim Russell, Ed, that had, Ed, you had them originally, and we did like three, last three fiscal years, I believe. They, they went between 9,000.
Yeah, take a look.
What we've got.
Yeah, I think they went between nine, I want to say one was nine, one was 15, one was 18,000, depending on, you know, the claims. And our, our whole goal was not to spend a whole lot more than that and give them the same, same benefit, but have hopefully a line item that we could budget into.
Okay.
So on this, if you want me to stay involved with it, I'd be happy to. If not, if you, you want to take it over, that's fine, too, but this is where we are at this point.
Okay, well, that's a big help, John, and if, again, if you're available to help out until, you know, see any of this that you've been working on through, that would be a big help to us. But again, we'll read through this and maybe get a couple of documents that we had, you know, about this that'd be helpful. I also, Francine, being the representative of PQB, and they're meeting later on this week. It would be helpful to maybe possibly even invite somebody from PQB to be part of this presentation, because it might change the personnel policies.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and if they could have this, somebody could forward it to them, I think that would be great ahead of time, so they're well-versed.
That'd be great. Any questions for John?
So I'll forward the document to the PBB and then we'll decide who, who would, who would come in addition. Okay, that's great.
Yeah, that's great. That's definitely a positive. It's been a long time coming to sort of actually have some movement on this is really good. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so next on the agenda is. Okay, so, next on the agenda is new business, the first is the Southampton legislative priorities for upcoming session. So we got an email from Senator Ellis's legislative aide asking for Southampton's legislative priorities for the upcoming legislative session. So we've gotten a lot of good suggestions from surveys with the public, from our own priorities, just wanted to know what we wanted to pass along to Caitlin Letourneau, his aide. I will say that Lindsay Sabadosa, on the representative's side, said that she's kinda making it her mission to help get a bike trail for the town of Southampton. She's putting that high on her list, I think since we heard number one, that bike trail was number one, I would like to suggest that we mention that. Are there other, other priorities that we should pass along to Caitlin and Senator Ellis?
Well, I was thinking a little bit on the lines, and I don't know if funding is available, but, you know, we've been sitting on this public safety complex for quite some time. Again, coming back to our communication infrastructure, about that, energy alternatives, and I'm also thinking about, you know, being on the PBB and not having the benefit, having worked for an organization that had an HR department, let me, let me start with that. I realized that, you know, having the professional expertise, now is there ever any, I know we can't afford our own, but is there any, anything through the state where they would have like a regional HR resource?
That's what the compact grants are all about, you know, is really trying to work across communities, and I do believe in the past, the Jacob study was funded by a compact grant, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it was, you're correct.
So I don't know, Chris, as our grants representative, I don't know if, what the cycle is for the compact grants, but that is exactly the kind of thing that they fund.
We should be in that, we should be in that cycle right now.
Yes. This year, we should be eligible for the community compact grant.
Right, I don't think we were allowed here because we were funded the previous year.
Exactly, yes.
So that would be definitely something worth looking into, so what I've heard so far is bike, or greenway, and energy alternatives, that kinda captures the second, you know, like, goal of the master plan, and then also public safety complex. And then I think East Street, we heard from Mike Rosenberg, and the road is a major corridor, so I would add funding for East Street. Anything else we should pass along?
Maybe you said it, Randy, I'm not sure, or Francine, about the, we had that presentation on the Whip City Public Utility Broadband Internet Improvement.
Yeah.
That too came up very high, yeah, right, that, that came up very high too on the community survey, so I don't know what has to happen legislatively on anything, but more, more money-wise, if there's any way to push anything, I don't know what's involved and what he's asking for.
It's probably about a five or six million dollar endeavor.
Yeah, exactly, so, and that's gonna be hard to get grants for, I think, so I think it's gotta come from a bigger pot than that.
I would just always add the schools, because, you know, they promised way back when, regionalization, you know, 100% regional transportation funded, and we lose thousands of dollars every year on the fact that they're not even close to, we're lucky to get 60% of the regional transportation back. So, I would say, you know, the schools, particularly regional transportation, because it so negatively impacts rural schools.
Absolutely.
Does that cover about the major things to pass along? You got all those, Ed?
Yeah, bike trail runway, uh, let's say communications infrastructure, public safety complex, regional HR resource, energy alternatives, East Street funding, and schools, regional school transportation.
Yep. Anything else on that? Okay, COVID-19 update, you know, we heard from the Board of Health, we don't have our meeting, you know, I think the timing of these phone calls with EMD, police, fire is not very good, it's always the day after Select Board meeting, and now my, you know, like I would like to request tomorrow, just so you know, to switch to Tuesdays, so that it would be, we could report off, we got them off on Monday, but now Wednesday's much, is not good for me, so maybe we can have it, you know, fresh, and then we can report to the Select Board exactly what, you know, I don't know if that works for you, Ed, but we haven't had, we haven't had a meeting in two weeks, because we do have it tomorrow. What other COVID-19 updates are there?
I would just say a couple of them is not only, you know, are the state numbers dropping in the last probably 10 days or so, and continue to be, I think it was down under 3,000 for what they released today for yesterday, but, you know, as, as was previously said, you know, Southampton's numbers were considerably down with what was reported, you know, last Thursday evening, there was about a three percentage point drop in the percent positivity over the last 14 days, from I think it was 10.53 to 7.4 something. Our average cases for the last 14 days were down considerably, I think we'll see that continue, we are still in the red, it's got a ways to go, obviously, to, till we get down back into the yellow, but I think, you know, we'll see that in another couple of weeks, so I think we'll continue to follow that state trend. Then, on the other notes, the, the governor has, as of Monday, released, withdrawn, however you'd like to put it, the, the curfew on the restaurants or the pubs and bars that not only serve alcohol, but have food go with them, so that they no longer have to have that 9:30 curfew, also withdrew the curfew on people being out and being on the road between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM in the morning. As we heard earlier, phase two of the vaccination starts beginning of February, that, the first phase of that includes those that are 75 and above, it includes people of any age that have two or more medical conditions. He did move the group that is in the age bracket above 65 into what will be the second phase of this phase two, which they predict will start around the middle of February.
There's a lot of background noise, is there a lot of background noise? Is there somebody, can somebody?
That might be me, sorry, hang on.
Okay, alright, go ahead.
Let's see.
They might be opening it up to 65 and older regardless of mobility, yep.
Yeah, yeah, and they're supposed to do that around the mid-February, of course, and all this is predicated on the vaccine being, you know, available also, so, you know, we know that the state, some of the states have complained about the fact that what they have been promised is not actually what they're getting, so, it seems, at least right now, we're, we're past that bubble that came from the holidays and heading back in, you know, the right direction for, for now.
Well, they can release 100 million vaccines in 100 days, you know, then, you know, these, these phases are gonna move quickly, and hopefully we can get the word out. So that, that's all positive, any questions about where we are with COVID? Okay, then we'll move on to CARES Act update, hopefully people are accessing the supplies and services that they are funding, that they got funding for?
They are, yeah, I haven't really received any more data from the state, you know, as, as far as whether they're gonna have, you know, another round of requests for people that may not have utilized all of their allocation, or, you know, have a formal method of reallocating what has already been requested and approved, if it's no, no longer needed into phase three, so I would expect we'll hear, hear about that over the next couple of weeks. But people are still, you know, receiving goods that, you know, originally were going to be ordered with that December 30th deadline that relaxed, gave, gave them some more time to receive them, so those goods and services are still coming in.
Just, just one thing to note, the Parks Commission did act on the, the funds that they had allocated, and have some great signs put up at both LeBree Field and Conan Park now, some of them will need to be moved in the springtime, because they were not able to put some posts in the ground, so they put them on available posts, which won't be where they really should be, in some cases at LeBree in particular, I think maybe, but Randall helped, and his crew helped install those signs, and Dan LaValle was instrumental in getting them done, so those look very good, so that's at least some, some COVID warning signs out in the public around the park and LeBree Field. And I think it might be good, you know, we don't know what's coming in the future, if there will be anything as a roundup, but at some point, you know, I know we're having to do, we will have to do some reporting on this too, but it may be good for those that have spent all that they're gonna spend, or spent whatever they've spent so far to let us know for sure, you know, where they are with that, so that, you know, the money that we had allocated that maybe they aren't gonna spend, we know how much is still kind of in play, that really, you know, we predicted but isn't gonna be used, I mean, I'm thinking of PPE, for example, I know at one point Board of Health had like $15,000 plus of PPE in, you know, available to them, and at one point they said that they couldn't possibly, you know, order all that, let alone have a place to store, and I think that was the biggest issue at the time, but, you know, if, if we aren't gonna spend all of that, you know, let's maybe get a handle on things ahead of time, so that if there's some surprise announcement from the state, you know, we don't have to scramble that, you know, I know, for example, like the Ag Commission that I lobbied for and the community covered, for example, they put in their funding, you know, their, their receipts for that, and they didn't come up to the total that we had allocated them for. They're getting all that they're asking for, but they didn't, they were short of what we even gave them, they're short maybe $1,000 or something, it's not big money, but just to say, there's, there's cases like that, I'm sure with everybody, so it might be good to get a bit of a budget handle if, if we could on that, going forward.
Yeah, I'll make a note to add to the agenda, the CARES Act report out financially on what was allocated, what's been spent, what's remaining, and if there are department heads that feel that they can't possibly access any, any particular service or line.
Can't use it or whatever, and I don't know, if, if through the, I'm not sure with our accounting system, if can we sort anything by, is that, that's probably not hard, not easy to do, it'd be a separate spreadsheet to sort like what's been spent for the police versus the fire, or can you do that by the codes on the, the accounting lines?
Yeah, to some extent, you can do that, codes of, well, I think, in this particular case, no, it's gonna be more difficult, because we created a code just for COVID.
Yeah, yeah, well, anyway, some, something that sort of shows, you know, where we are, kind of department by department is what I'm thinking of, you know, where are we in terms of what was allocated and approved, and, you know, what's been spent?
I've, I've got a file of the invoices, so it may be able to be broken down just through the invoices.
Okay, yeah.
And, and it might be, it may be possible that like for the Ag Commission or whatever, they may find they need something a little different in the, in the springtime or whatever, when, you know, stands and stuff again, so.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point, and I, I think that, that is valid to say, okay, well, you know, you, you thought you were gonna need this, you couldn't use it then, but now because we're extended, there might be another, another opportunity here, yeah, very, very good point. So I think that's, you know, even better reason to kinda get a handle on where things stand as of now, so that we know what's still in play with what we were allocated.
Okay, I'll, I'll just make a note to include it on the agenda and talk to Ed about it, and make sure that we get sort of report out.
Yeah, and really, which is one thing, you mentioned, I think you're having your, your phone call tomorrow, it just dawned on me on the, on the COVID thing, I've been hearing a lot, and I don't know whether this is a new recommendation from CDC or not, about double masking, I guess I would just, I would just like to have more clarification on that from the Board of Health, whenever you meet or whoever.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be tomorrow, we'll have to ask Jerry about that. Yeah, Dr. Fauci was the one that actually spoke to that, I think in the last day or two.
Right.
About double masking.
I have, I have a hard time reading through one, let alone two.
Okay, so that's CARES Act, any other questions about it? All right, the next is IT updates, everybody has been having email issues, Bluehost issues, what is the laptop rollout, I understand that they're there and need to be rolled out, and the website, I'm adding, can we discuss where things are at? Because there's problems everywhere.
Sure, the, the email issue started probably about, I don't know, a week and a half or two ago, and there's two separate issues, the first was, Bluehost had some sort of national issue with anyone that their webmail interacted with a third-party service such as Outlook, Microsoft Mail, so forth, we basically use Microsoft Outlook. So, we had an issue about, for about three days before they straightened that out. They straightened that out, and shortly after, as we went to this past weekend on Friday, I started noticing some issues with email again, and after talking with Bluehost and going through a number of phone calls and tickets, found out that it was actually our capacity on the server was just about maxed out for emails, so they had recommended that we increase our capacity, so we purchased an additional drive to add to that capacity, and when they went to utilize that, they found out that they really couldn't upgrade our original storage by stacking another storage disk on top of it after we purchased it, so they confirmed today that the solution for us is to buy a larger gigabyte drive than the 120 we had on there, it will end up crediting, crediting us to the 30 gigabyte drive that we had purchased to have added to it, and they don't have, they don't, in their automatic purchasing mode on their website, they don't have a price for 160 gigabyte drives, so they're getting me the cost of that less the 30 gigabyte drive, and we will purchase that, and they will swap out the 120 for the 160, they were working on it today, and at the end of the day, it seemed to be working much better again, but it has been intermittent, so once we swap, they swap that drive out for us, it should take care of that particular issue.
Now, Ed?
And then as far as...
Sorry.
Yes.
Let's just stick with the email for a sec.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is this all being done to the new server, or is this the old server?
It is not our server, John, this is Bluehost server, it's remote.
It has nothing to do with our server.
Nothing to do with our server at all, correct.
Okay.
So what are the problems that people, or other problems? I know that for me, for some reason, when I send an email, it'll give me an error message, even though it sounds like it went. Is anybody else having that problem? I send an email and I get this error message saying I'm unable to send it, but it does appear as if it went though, because it's in my sent, and it, and people are verifying that they got my email, but I get an error message saying it wasn't sent.
Yeah.
That, that's part of our capacity issue.
Okay, so that should get better?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the same when I send emails to people at their town address, I get, I get it back that it was not deliverable?
Yeah, that's the same message.
Same message, going and coming, okay.
What about the spam, people complaining that their, too much of their email goes to spam? to spam?
I have, as part of this, I have having them taking us off the spam experts, which will hopefully take care of that issue. But at first, I had them actually reduce the level settings on the spam experts, and it really didn't do anything. So they're gonna take us back off of that, put us in their regular web mail. Hopefully that will take care of that issue.
So a question, Dan LaValle and the IT Committee were working on, you know, the ability to get us off these servers and get us off onto like a Microsoft 365 in cloud basis for storage. And they said that our website and email could both be done against that cloud server. Are they working on that now? Or have we given that, you know, kind of guidance to go ahead and come back? Because I know they were trying to come up with a proposal.
They are working on that now, and that's part of the laptops. Because when these laptops get rolled out, at least the laptops, we will be moving to Microsoft 365. We will be moving to the email portion of that at this point in time until we can migrate everyone over to it. But they are working on the best way to roll out these laptops and ensure that the Microsoft 365 is compatible with everything else that people run for software. So that they don't start a rollout and find out that they're crashing right away.
So when, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if there was an ETA, because I know two meetings ago, they talked about maybe not even starting with our new server and trying to return it and get a refund on it if we're gonna go to Microsoft 365.
Well, John, I'm just gonna say this. In my mind, there's no way to be without a server. Not everything can be in the cloud, because those servers also take care of things like your printers and things like that, too. So there is stuff that a server is required, a physical server is required to do.
Well, I mean, a cloud-based program, there are actual physical servers somewhere else, that's all. They're just not sitting in our site. It doesn't get rid of all these servers. There's a backup server somewhere that Microsoft has and all the information's on it. So I know, I'm familiar, at least when I was at the university, we were able to do that. Everything worked, you know. So that's, I didn't realize we're much smaller and our budget is much more limited. But it'd be great if we can get everything into a cloud as much as possible.
Yeah.
Absolutely, as much as possible.
The increased drives that you were just talking about, again, that those would be putting on, those are needed to put on our server, is that right? Or no?
No, that's Bluehost, used for web service. Correct. That's not on our server.
But we just, we just have to pay for that additional memory in there, if you will, right?
Right, exactly. We pay so, it's so much a month, even though we pay for it annually and renew it annually.
Yeah.
Yeah. Interesting. Well, I know that the Tech Committee's got a meeting coming up on Thursday, I think, right?
Thursday. Right, exactly. So we'll be talking about that again Thursday night.
Yeah, I know, I had heard from, I think it was David Rooks has been working on the research for the Microsoft 365. So they've put some information together, I assume, for this meeting. So hopefully they will be able to explain where they are with it. And, you know, I would assume we'd have to go out to a bid for vendors to install or to bid on the 365 package, if that's what we want to do.
Actually, when we did the procurement for these laptops, we included 365 with that. So at least on this level, that's, that was built in. But as we migrate the rest of the population over, then we will have to account for that.
So with the laptops that we've currently got for the department heads, did they come configured or we've got to configure them?
We will configure them, or the vendor will configure them for us. But they will configure them with that Microsoft 365.
So we can't roll out the laptops until we make all these changes on 365 then?
No, he's talking about 365 for the people that are not getting laptops to.
He's talking more than, yeah.
It's, it's, you can mix the two, shall we say, the cloud-based Microsoft 365 with basically regular Microsoft suite. So the laptops we got for the department heads will have Microsoft 365 on them. It will use that for everything except email. And then we'll roll those out. And then at some point in the future, we will migrate everyone else over to Microsoft 365. And at that point, do a migration and utilize the Microsoft 365 Outlook portion for the email.
Do we know when we're gonna roll those out? Laptops?
That was part of the discussion with the ad hoc tech committee. So that will continue on Thursday evening.
Okay, I'll wait till then.
They wanted to make sure that, and we might just do a small population at first, but they want to be very sure that when they're rolled out, that it is compatible with everything and they don't just, you know, crash with the soft write or, you know, something else that some people might have on their existing desktop.
Okay, but the committee is free and available and willing to assist with the rollout of the laptops? Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I think that, yeah, I think we just need to be clear that that's, that's one of our expectations is that we want them to assist with the rollout. I don't know that they're, you know.
Assist with the scheduling of the rollout.
Okay, or yes. I mean, and I guess, you know, again, we, you know, people know we ordered them. I mean, if I were sitting in Town Hall, frankly, I know I have a computer sitting there somewhere for me. So I'd rather see it sooner than later. So I think we have to make that a, you know, a good priority somehow to do it, whether, you know, the vendor configures them or who configures them. But we've got, what, 12 or 13 to do, so.
Yeah, for these laptops, the vendor will configure them for us.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Well, sooner rather than later if they're just sitting there. So that takes care of the email issue and also the laptop rollout. The other issue I was just questioning about is I know, Lucy, thank you for updating the committee assignments and boards. When there's something for the website, what is the process for getting it out on the web? I do believe we're paying somebody who was a previous web person that was doing the library, we're currently paying this person. Is that still true?
That is, that is true. And that wasn't our budget, because this was done before by a volunteer. So as we utilize that service, we're incurring costs that were budgeted.
Okay, so when there's something to upload to the website by any department head or by you, are they giving you the information and you're passing it along to this web person? Or are the department heads contacting them directly? What does that look like?
They give it to me and I pass it along to the web person. Because one of the, one of the pieces of the puzzle that I found was that everyone was used to art doing it and art was very familiar with the website. This person necessarily isn't. So with basically each set of requests that come through, I will send along with a brief description of, you know, how to get there, of which tabs and where to place it on the page.
Is that something that the Tech Committee is able or willing to help with? I think there's a lot of expertise there. We're paying for something. I mean, a lot of questions come up, like, a lot of the things that are being put out in the web are, some of them are COVID-related announcements, other COVID money that can be used towards that. And if there's somebody that's not familiar with our website, then why are we paying them to update it?
Yep.
So you want the webs not updated?
No, I want it updated. But I just was wondering if you had said that the person that's doing it is not familiar with our webpage. So I'm just wondering, do we have other options of people like the Tech Committee who might be able to do it easier, quicker, and frankly, voluntarily?
I don't know if any of them are familiar with WordPress. It's a, it's not a, it's not a user-friendly technology to update it. That's why at some point in time, I'd really like to, it's about a $10,000 or $11,000 cost, but I'd love to see this get updated into technology that is today's technology, where actually a lot of it, the department heads or the administrative assistants could actually update it right in-house.
Yeah. I think you have to centralize that to some degree, so that there's some consistency and, you know, some vetting process. But I think that we have a pretty experienced voluntary committee. I think it should come up maybe at one of their meetings.
Sure. Agenda item, yeah.
Yeah. And what is the period of time right now for the time that something is passed on to this person to the time it gets up on the web?
Generally about a day.
Okay.
Yeah, about a day. Sometimes it's the same day.
Any other questions about any of the IT issues? Thank you very much for that information. Next on the agenda then is the envelope study. Was it very interesting to read through that envelope study? Let me tell you. So this was paid for by the Community Preservation Committee under the historical pot of money. And it was extremely interesting to read and see pictures of the old Town Hall. It certainly is an old building.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So.
And I was, one of my things, you know, one of my thoughts was, is it possible to have this person come and make a presentation to us?
Yeah, that would be.
On the study?
Yeah.
We can pay to have them come into a presentation on it.
Are there funds available out of this, out of the money that we got from CPC to do that?
I think it came into the budget.
Yeah. It was, it wasn't anywhere near the amount of money that was allocated for this. So yes, there is funding available.
I think it was $30,000.
Yes, it was $30,000. And I think, I think we authorized something like, I don't know, 12 or 13 between the, about 2,000 between the steps that we had.
Yeah. Well, I think that's a great idea, to actually have a presentation by the person that did the actual study. Because I think, you know, for me, it's interesting to see. And my first thought is, you know, we should do, you know, since we don't know any future use per se, other than what's currently used, to me, it seems logical that we would focus on, if we can, safety. So safety, the residents of the building in terms of exhaust, safety in terms of exit signs, things like that. Some of the major, like, very expensive things, I think taking a step without knowing the future use of the building might be tricky.
Yeah, I think from reading it.
No, I was thinking, could they, I mean, given the fact that we don't really have a plan for it, but help us envision what it might be, some options.
Yeah.
If you do this, then you might be able to, it could be that. If you do this, you know, I mean, just put it in perspective for us so that we can make a decision down the road.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be interesting. I mean, you look at all the buildings around in East Hampton that are getting renovated. It's just amazing use of some of these old buildings. And this is different, obviously, in terms of its structure. But nonetheless, it's, it's there. And because it is a historic building, you know, there's gotta be some grants out there somewhere for historic preservation. You know, it's just, it's the next one to start thinking about, you know. So I think, you know, there's, you know, there's possibilities, I think. But it would be good to have some thoughts about, you know, what could it turn into? What could it be? And then, you know, where, you know, as Francine said, we've still gotta be plugging on the public safety complex somehow. You know, where could the police go to make that a different space for something?
And please don't lose track that that really wasn't the scope that we were going down with this study. The scope was really is an envelope study. And what do we need to do to protect the exterior, the envelope of this building? So it does not, you know, it does not deteriorate and get to a point that, okay, it's basically either useless or worthless or what have you.
Right. I think the key word is restoration.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. And I'll tell you, as, you know, from a couple of members of the historical committee or commission already, and I didn't, I mean, I understand a bit of it. And I just look at it and I kind of say, all of this stuff needs to get taken care of. But, you know, Bob Cozep and Doric Dodd sent me along some comments. And, you know, one of the things that they'd like to see upgraded from the final draft to the final version is if Hill engineers can actually prioritize these type of items. And I kind of threw it back at Bob and said, okay, like, to the point of prioritization and saying, okay, well, the roof should be redone in the next, you know, 18 months or a year. The, you know, the mortar and the brick, you know, need to be taken care of in the next, you know, three to five years. And maybe the wooden soffits or whatever, you know, in a two to three-year period and like that. And Bob said, yeah, that's, they were envisioning out of this, which, you know, gives us some idea of, not only, okay, these are issues, but how urgent are those, you know, issues to get taken care of? And Jamie Reinhardt from Hill is very, very good. And, you know, he's explained to me along the way that, okay, as we start asking for, you know, cost options, as you look at individual projects versus grouping them together, you know, if you, if there are five things that need to be taken care of in the next three years, if you group them all together, you'll probably, it'll probably cost down less money than if you took them and said, I'm gonna do A this year, B the following year, C the following year, D, you know, and year four, and E in year five, you know, type of thing. So, you know, that was some of the comments. One of the other things that just from the comments that Bob and Doric had made is, I'm gonna ask them to go back to the cover page. And right now, they've got it entitled, Building Code Accessibility Evaluation Four. I'm gonna ask him if he can change that to envelope study for including building code accessibility evaluation. You know, just because actually, you know, the main scope of it was, okay, how do we, how best do we restore or preserve the outside of this building to keep its integrity, the inside, for whatever future use might be used?
Okay, that sounds good. I think having a presentation by Hill would be great. And if you could find out, Francine, you're a representative of CPC?
Yes.
You have a meeting coming up? Could you, I'm just curious, if we could just find out how much is in the historical, you know, historical pot from CPC? I mean, that wouldn't be a request from us. That wouldn't be a request from us anyway. It would be more historical or whatever. But I was just curious about that. It would make sense if we're gonna have a presentation to at least invite Ron Lauren, Historical Building Inspector and Police.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on the envelope study?
Any preferred meeting date?
Anybody have a preference for when they would present? Anybody have a preference for when they would present?
No. Maybe the two weeks out, I mean, two meetings out, because if we have the disability one next time, then have a, have a presentation the following one at the end of February or something? I mean, you know, sometimes we get jammed up when we have two heavy-duty presentations in one meeting, I think, so.
Yeah.
I think that disability one's gonna take a lot of our time and attention to focus on, so I'd rather, you know, give that the priority, but then follow up on the next select board meeting with this kind of a presentation.
Is everybody okay with that?
So that would make it the 23rd then, February 23rd? Okay.
Right. And in the meantime, if any of you are going through it and see anything you think, you know, should be addressed or edited before it's turned into a final report, please just send me your comments in an email. And I'll, and I'll get those to Jamie.
Okay, thank you for that. Next, we have the Open Space Recreation Plan update. So I believe right now it was already sent to the state, and are we just waiting for their approval? We got the letters of approval, we approved it, the planning board approved it, and I think CONCOM approved it. So where?
Right, and, yeah, and I just got, Paul Demon dropped off the hard copy of their approval letter to me yesterday, so I'll send those off to Ken Comia, and I'll talk to him about incorporating any of the suggested edits into that report.
Okay. Any questions about that? So a lot of these grants that have to do with open space trails and whatnot depend upon approved open space plans. So what do you think our timetable is on having it be completely done and signed sealed?
Well, the state had told Ken that right now they're about three months out in their approvals. But we've also been told that as long as the state has a draft and is considering it, that any of the grants that we would apply for, if we just basically said that we have a draft OSRP plan that is waiting to be approved or commented on by the state, that we would still be eligible for those grants.
Okay, good. Any other questions about the Open Space and Recreation Plan? Okay, so the next we talked a little bit about, but there was an email that came in to us with a very, like, two-day turnaround on any update, project update relative to the East Street, not Bridge, but East Street project, because it is on the TIP rehabilitation plan for 2025. And then also, like Ed said, the Mastart funding for the Greenway. And so what updates are there on that, Ed?
I responded to Daryl, and I have not, you know, heard back anything as of now. I was, and I was a little bit confused because we got that email, and then about, at about the same time, we also got a letter from PVPC asking us to update our TIP requests. And in that one, there was a deadline of February 8th. So I will see what I can find out on the two different requests and get back to you.
Yeah, why would PVPC be asking us?
PVPC is actually the organization that the Regional Transportation Committee worked under. So they do, they do all the work for, you know, the TIP committee that John has sat on as an alternate member. So they, they put all this together all.
Okay, and the original email that I referred to, the one that came in, that you said you replied to, who, where was he from?
I'd have to go back and take a look. I believe he was from DOT, but I could be wrong.
It was DOT, yep. Yeah, because they talked about the rehabilitation of East Street from College Highway Easterly to County Road, 2.6 miles.
Yeah.
They were looking for any project updates.
Correct, estimates, yeah.
So it seems like we heard from the original source, but also the organization that this project gets funneled through?
Right, it puts the ratings on it, and, yeah, moves, moves them around in that five-year TIP process.
Okay, well, hopefully they move it, you know, up. Okay, all right, so we'll just wait to hear, hear about that. Any questions about that? If I didn't confuse everybody totally? Next on the agenda is, help me out, somebody, what's next?
The Employee Leave Practice Policy Due to COVID-19.
Okay, you want to talk about that then?
Yes, and, you know, as I reported at the last meeting, the Families First Act did expire on December 31st of 2020. It wasn't carried forward like the CARES Act does. And one of the things of the Families First Act was it, it gave employees an additional 80 hours of leave time if it was associated with, you know, COVID-19, close contact infection, a few other things. So we're at a point now, we may be just coming off the height of this, but currently don't have anything in place as far as authorize employee-related leave due to COVID-19. So we don't necessarily want individuals hiding symptoms, coming to work if they're sick, what have you, and spreading the coronavirus, you know, either here or the workplace, or, you know, if, if we're going to give them additional leave and tell them to stay home, that they should stay home, quarantine, and not be spreading it on the outside also. So what I, I sent out a draft, both in the meeting materials and via email, and I put it in the Dropbox also. Jerry did have one recommended change to that, because CDC has changed their guidance a little bit from originally. So what I'd like to recommend for the board's consideration is this. Allowing up an additional two weeks, 80 hours, based on 10 days of 40 hours work per five-day work. Others shall be prorated of paid leave for employees who have been in close contact or for fire, EMS, police, and highway department employees suspected close contact with someone who has COVID-19. Employees who have been in close or suspected close contact as listed above shall stay out of work and be tested for COVID-19 following the CDC guidelines. If they test negative, they may return to work. If they test positive, they shall stay out of work 10 days from symptom onset or positive result per CDC guidance. Police, fire, EMS, and highway departments are allowed to follow the CDC guidance for those necessary to perform functions of critical infrastructure for a rapid return to work if it is deemed necessary.
Well, I, I think it's fair, I, you know, to make this provision for people. My only thought would be, shouldn't, again, coming back to the Board of Health, shouldn't this be reported to the Board of Health? And then the, you know, the timeframe and everything be calculated, you know, be maintained by those who are in a position to have access to this information?
Well, I have a couple of concerns, you know, should this be coming also out of PQB? Like, Family First expired the end of December, people that have less than 50 employees in municipalities are exempt. I mean, I understand the whole intent of it, I just don't think there's enough explanation in it. So if somebody says they had close contact, what is the expectation in terms of when are they supposed to then be COVID-tested? What about people, like, if it's a critical position and they're out for 10 days? Is there replacement, is there money for replacement of that position? I mean, I think that in theory, I think it's, you know, good, we don't want people coming to work that, you know, feel obligated to, that may have had exposure, but I've been living this since March around who's exposed, who's not exposed, who has symptoms, who doesn't, who should quarantine, who shouldn't? And I just don't think it's clear enough. And also, it just came in today, and I can't approve something that I didn't, I mean, it has, I have, I mean, I sit down last night and read a lot of stuff, and I just, I just can't adjust things in less than a day.
And I'll definitely bring it forward to the PQB for their meeting on Thursday. Because, yeah, they should weigh in also.
And if they're referring to the CDC guidance, I'd just like to have that sort of be attached so we can discuss it as, you know, like, I mean, certainly, I think going by CDC, going by DPH, I mean, that's what you should do. You should just make it all up yourself. We have to follow those guidances, but I just don't have that in front of me right now.
And would this be retroactive to January 1st, for example?
Yeah.
We could make it that way.
And so if I'm understanding, anybody else that had been exposed and has dealt with it already, say, back in October, they would have already benefited through the other, the other policy, right? So they.
Correct.
Okay.
So what were, what was the time that they took off? Was it sick time? If anybody took off time because of possible exposure, did they use sick time? Or would that still be the case? What if there weren't, wasn't benefit of time left? Then what is it taken as?
I'm not following, sorry.
Okay, so when people are off, are they off without having to use sick time? Are they off just because it's excuse?
Yes, they, yeah, they'd be, they would be using this up until there was 80 hours or 60 hours based on, on two weeks' time. They wouldn't have to use their regular sick time.
Other comments?
No, I think it's a good idea. I just want to be sure that we've got all the right details in the right place, I mean, that it's clear enough so that everybody understands what, what they have to do and when. And I'm assuming if people have that exposure now or expected exposure, what do they do? Do they call their supervisor? Do they call the Board of Health? What do they do now?
They would basically call their supervisor. And in some instances, you know, the supervisor may, may be aware of the particular issue, especially if it happened to be, you know, police or EMS.
But if we take a little longer to consider this, it could be made retroactive to January 1st so that no one is penalized as a result of us taking a little more time to review it. People agree?
You could do that, correct.
And how many people or how many days up till now has been taken off and benefited time has been used since January? Just, and, you know, I mean, first of all, we're only at the end of the month, but has this been a frequent occurrence?
Depends on how you define frequent. I can, I can think of six individuals that I can think of right off the top of my head, but I can get that information for you.
Okay, I'd like to see the, you know, just the guidance from CDC. Do they say that, you know, if you had exposure, does it have to be somebody that had a confirmed positive? And in such case, you would be contacted by a case tracer, I would imagine, if you were identified by that case tracer or by that person that was positive? And what is the expectation in terms of getting tested? Should you, you expect to get tested within 24 hours? You know, I mean, I just think.
CDC guidance is five days.
So you have five days to get tested after you learn that you might have been exposed to somebody?
Correct, because of the incubation time of the virus.
Yeah. Okay. If we can just get a little bit more information, that would be helpful.
Happy to do it.
Okay, any other questions about that? All right, so next then is the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we do have three potential dates from, that include Fuss and O'Neill's availability. And it's
Yes.
The, the end of this week. Just so you know, Ed, you would, there might be a conflict in that 4:00 PM meeting with the CONCOM and Open Space people. I think you had confirmed or someone did 4:00 PM on Thursday, and that was one of the MVP dates.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody has gotten back to me liking the Thursday day yet. The Friday and the Monday seem to be the two popular ones so far, but.
Okay.
Yeah, thank, thank you for reminding me of that.
All right, so this is the committee that we already got, we are identified as MVP community, and we have to meet and potentially put forth a project. And that is going to be, we're going to be assisted by an organization called Fuss and O'Neill. And they're going to be at this meeting, and I think you've identified the committee, right? I'm the representative from the select board, and the other people from the other.
Yeah, this is the core, the core team, and basically, the core team's charge is fairly short. It's probably this initial kickoff meeting, which will be 90 minutes and maybe another meeting after that. But the core team's responsibility is after they hear the different sectors. And what will be looked at is to identify both people from as employees, from boards and committees, or the community that should serve on the overall committee that will put this together.
Okay, and Chris reminded me that when the newsletter for MVP came out recently, there was a date by the 22nd of February, if I'm not mistaken, where we're required to provide them some information. So that will fit within our timetable of meetings, you think?
I would think so.
Okay. So in that case, Ed, I could do Friday or Monday, and just my request, since Friday is days away, if we could get a confirmation tomorrow?
Sure.
Great, with either one of the.
I think actually most, yeah, most people had gotten back to me this afternoon, so. So I'll check and see who hasn't and go from, in the morning, and if I have to, I'll give them a call and go from there.
Okay, that'd be great.
Is this something the emergency manager should be included in on?
I hope so.
I didn't see his name on.
I think that's one of, I think that's who I missed. I knew there was one person I missed.
Okay.
And that's it, I missed Don, yeah, thank you. I tried to make Don Francine actually, it appeared.
You're better off with Don in this instance, I'll tell you that.
All right, it'll be good to get that going. We really need to identify a plan, and we already have enough input, I think, of some project we can do. So the next is a revenue and expenditures, that's a standing item? I don't think we have any documents, we did it last time?
No, there'll be one for the next meeting, yeah.
Okay. The next one says, the next agenda, does anybody have any questions about revenue expenditure report? The next item is follow-up posting, keeping meeting recordings updated.
And then this, Jen brought it up. And then this, Jen brought it up as a follow-up to the Finance Committee meeting, the last Finance Committee meeting, when they were asking about the recordings from the, of the meetings from the school. So I did check with KP Law, and there is not a requirement to post meeting recordings under the open meeting, open meeting law, normal times. In COVID times, those rules and regulations may change a little bit, but in COVID times, under those rules and regulations, as long as the board or committee, and in this case, I'll just say the school committee, did broadcast their original meeting in a live format, either via Zoom or on a cable access TV, then no, there are no requirements for them to post those meeting, meeting video, audio recordings.
So are you saying that the meetings were recorded for the benefit of the minutes ticker, and therefore, even though it's recorded, there's no obligation on anybody's part to make it available to the public?
By posting it, correct. I mean, someone could actually, while those recordings are in existence and the minutes are posted, could theoretically request a copy of the video recording of that meeting.
So I guess the question was, it states that they're going to destroy it after the meeting. That's okay to do?
They can only destroy it after the, the minutes are produced.
Okay. So that, that's-
Once, what, yeah, once that's done, they can.
But is that recording, public meeting, I mean, open meeting law, if there was a public records request for the actual video before the minutes came out, or no?
That, that could be done.
Hmm. Now, you're, you're saying before, when the meeting, the minutes are produced, do you mean produced and approved, or just produced?
Posted.
Produced and approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's interesting.
So it's, if I'm understanding, so it's a public meeting, because you're holding the meeting on Zoom, and the public has seen the invite, and they could join if they wanted to, but the meeting might not necessarily be recorded, it may or may not be recorded, right? Doesn't have to be recorded, it has to be open to the public, but not necessarily recorded, and therefore not necessarily posted as a video, as long as the minutes are posted. Does that sum it up, right?
Yeah.
But you told me, Ed, that the minutes, they're, don't 100% have to be posted. So someone could-
Minutes don't either.
Right, so someone could theoretically, have a Zoom meeting, record it, and then go ahead and type up minutes, and then have them approve, and nothing ends up on any website or posting anywhere. But if it's requested-
You're correct.
They don't have to produce the video if there are minutes that can be released. Is that right?
Correct. Yes.
And who actually gave us this information?
KP Law.
KP Law, okay. That's interesting.
Yeah.
Any questions about that?
It answers the question from the Finance Committee, I guess, not what we thought the answer would be, but if that's what KP Law states.
Yeah. Okay, well, if nobody has any other questions, we'll just store that as interesting. So the next thing is the FY '22 budget, and we're going to keep this on the agenda every time to try, to make sure that we stay according to our budget bylaw. And so let's see update, Ed.
Yes, I'm, I'm putting out a little amendment to my original letter, just to follow up, because the original budget parameters that I provided in that, after the last meeting, are entirely correct. So I'm going to amend it and actually ask for two different budgets be developed by the department heads. One that actually directs them to put a budget together that would recoup, recapture, level, level fund their budget with the funds or the level of funds that before they were cut for fiscal year '21. And then I'm going to ask them another budget question, that they develop a budget with, with rooting of what they feel would be the correct amount for those accounts to fund their department for the services that are required by the community. And that should give us a parameter to look at of whether, you know, out of existing funds, we can get to the first level of restoring some of those funds that were cut during this fiscal year, and what it might take in either fiscal year '22 or in the future to get that department to a place where it's actually supplying the services that are required by the community. And then the Select Board and the Finance Committee can look at those two, decide if, you know, what is feasible, and are we going to utilize just what we have in basically all our revenues for fiscal year '22? If they would like to supplement some of those items utilizing operational stabilization, or, you know, does the, you know, board and/or Finance Committee think we should be looking for a Proposition Two and a Half override for fiscal year '22?
Okay, I'm just looking at our budget process, and it does say that, that you would confer with all the department heads around budget priorities. I think you have already heard from us around, well, not entirely, but there's, I think there's more discussion around some priorities that we can talk about. We started talking about that last time. So is there a plan right now for department heads to meet with the Finance Committee?
I'm going to start scheduling that with the Finance Committee and their upcoming meetings in, in February, so. But I would at least like, like, definitely like to get the larger committees in front of them-
Yeah.
And probably sooner rather than later. And then I'll, happy to work with the Finance Committee with any departments that they definitely want to see or have questions of.
Okay. Who else wants to chime in in terms of either budget priorities, or the process, or anything? I know there was some discussion around the PQB information that would have been provided with. Does anybody else want to say anything about the budget, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, I just, we need to make sure that this is simple. I'm not, I'm not, you know, I, I think I get the under, and I'm sure you'll make this more concise, but like, I mean, I just want to make sure that this is simple for the, the boards and the department heads to do. I mean, the way, the way, you know, I've been thinking about this, I was vocal about this last meeting, is that, you know, our budget is what it is right now, you know, perhaps, perhaps now, and I don't want to overcomplicate this, but I, but I'm not sure if we need like a third scenario here. I mean, at the end of the day, our budget can increase two and a half percent off of what it was this year, you know, plus it's-
I disagree with that.
So it's great to like, try to recoup what we lost last year, you know, I'm sure that that, plus Hampshire Regional just eats up entire, the entire two and a half, if not, if not it being more. I mean, I've been looking at this budget for a while now, I'm just not, like, recouping all of that last year, I'm not even sure we could do that this year, but I mean, well, I guess we'll see where our revenues are, and where the two and a half shakes out, but I just don't know is that that's necessarily in the cards. But I think the way that I was thinking about this, to send a message to the department heads is, you know, you know, the, is perhaps level, you know, it's level funded with contract increases only, so that we know what our, like, total obligation is from a contract standpoint, and from, you know, from that standpoint, hopefully that's below what our revenues and what we're allowed to levy taxes increases at. You know, a second one would be, okay, fine, if we're not going to do dollar one budgeting, then, you know, try to recoup the losses that were cut in the previous year to keep the level service. But I, but I think that, but I think instead of doing that, what it really should be is, okay, you know, you know, it should just, it really should be, to try to, we have to come up with two scenarios. I think we need to come up with a balanced budget scenario, which is level fund plus contract increases. And then the second version of the budget should be, okay, what is it that you need to provide a better service in town? And so you go across all the departments, and, and, really, to your point, like, the Jacob study and the work that Art Lawrence did on that probably should be included in the general government slash Ed's ask. And these types of things, depending, so, okay, so that's, you know, if we're just going to go on that theme, then, you know, paying the right amount for, for people in general government and paying them the correct figure based on the going rate, priority one. Priority two is X, Y, and Z, and they're in kind of rank order by the department head. Police does the same thing, this is what I would like to have, and they do rank order and they go, and they go to the police department. And then what I really think we should figure out is, off of those two scenarios, how do we balance our budget, number one? And then number two, do we want to go for an override with the ranked list? I, I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm being too, if I'm not making sense or I'm being too succinct, but like, I, I do personally want to come up with an override budget for the town to consider and to, for the town to vote on. And I want to make sure that we have all of the information, this is speaking for myself, like, I want to have all of the information from, especially the main departments, but frankly, all of the departments about a ranked list and the costs associated with the things that they want. Now, they've got to come up with a balanced budget figure, so that's going to be the painstaking ask, because I, and I don't think that the balanced budget figure should automatically be, okay, recoup your losses from last year and then add a growth figure, or add your contract increases. I'm not so sure that our budget's going to even be able to take that. And I don't want, you know, personally, like, I think that overcomplicates the matter, like, we've got to, we've got to balance our budget, and then I think, I think we really should be presenting an override budget, and I think that recouping what you lost last year perhaps needs to go into the override budget, because I'm not sure that we can balance with all of those losses, if that makes sense. And we cut our budget a quarter of a million dollars last year, and generally speaking, we have $300,000 to $350,000 to play with every year. So if you recoup the $250,000, plus Hampshire Regional, we're already over.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying math here.
Let me tell you this, let me tell you this, retirement's already going to be up $80,000 over this year.
Even more to the point, so like, I'm not sure that we need, I'm not sure that we need the middle budget of, okay, I think, I think the first budget to, to make it super simple is level funded plus contract increases. We got to look at that number and see what, hopefully, we're under our revenues and our tax increases, and then we, we have a little bit to play with to, to, to do something with, to create a balanced budget scenario for the public. Option two, your, every department rank order lists. Now, if they want priority one to be, I lost $25,000 last year, I want that back in my wage line or whatever it was taken from, that's their priority one. If they come up with a different priority one, I want, you know, school wants curriculum, police wants whatever it might be, Town Hall wants, you know, their wages, their wages fixed. I mean, whatever, whatever it is, you come up with a rank order and a cost of that, and then that becomes something for the Finance Committee to consider, the Select Board to consider, in terms of piecing together what would amount to a fiscally conservative, I guess would be the right word, or a moderate, or a well-thought-out and presented override budget to the town in an effort to not only preserve service, but also extend service and make our town better. I mean, and, and to be able to have that be saleable and sellable to people. And so it's not, you know, it's not frivolous, it's not, it's, you know, it's, it's conservative in nature, given that it's an override, I, I get that, I guess that by nature is not conservative, but at the end of the day, we're running on a shoestring budget. I think it's, I think we start, we need to be offering these to the town, and, and I don't think we're doing the work, like, certainly, we didn't do it last year, and I do think that we should probably get in more of a regular habit of seeing what the citizens want and letting them vote on it.
I think we can hopefully, you know, I think that we're, the message is a little bit louder and clearer with Hampshire Regional, that, you know, we're kind of working within a two and a half, and last year, I think they did do a lot of work to bring the budget to a reasonable level and shifted some funds over to capital. So I, you know, I'm hoping that we don't always have the precedence that, you know, Hampshire Regional's going to blow up our budget, because I think, I think we've made a lot of progress there. Chris or Francine or John, you want to say anything more about the budget?
Yeah, no, I would just like to say, you know, I think, you know, the idea of, you know, maybe going toward the idea of an, an override option, I think is there, but I think if we're going to do it, let's, let's do it sort of fully in that sense, that we have not acted on this personnel wage study, and I think we need to, you know, make that part of that plan. If we're going to go for an override, let's get the wages right for the people in Town Hall, let's look at the grades and the steps and the wage levels and get it right, however we get it done. I'm not totally sure how that has to happen to, to update that study, because that already is, what, a couple of years old, is it not, even though?
And so is the current PQB scale, actually. So is the current scale and step that the PQB is using, I think-
Well, the one, yeah, the one they're using is even worse than that, but what I'm saying is the study that Art presented to us, even though he presented it last year, that's already outdated, so that, at a minimum, has got to be updated, but that should be what we should be looking at in terms of folding it into an override and say, okay, here's, here's the real levels for what, what our town, you know, services cost us, for qualified personnel. I mean, we're, you know, we're going to keep on, you know, having, you know, low morale and discouraged employees and people leaving and looking for jobs if we don't do something to be more competitive. And if we're going to go for an override, let's get it right and put it all together. But going back to the question, I guess I, I still, I'm a little clear, unclear about, if, if I were sitting as a department head, okay, give me the two sentences that you want me to do to prepare my budget. I'm not clear on everything that both Ed and Matt have said, so.
I think for me, it's, it's, it's level fund, I think for me, it's level funded plus contract increase. That's budget one. Budget two is, is your, is, is, is budget one, plus your wish list, and the wish list is ranked from one to 10, or one to three, or whatever it is your priorities are, and each number has to have a very specific cost associated with it. It can't be this, like, I, you know, I want to hire another guy, but I don't have any idea how much that costs.
Yeah, well, in a narrative.
How much that costs, because ultimately, if we decide, if, if that, if we want to put that in the override budget, we've got to have a cost associated with it, and if it ends up getting powered and voted on, then that's the number that you're stuck with, and if you, and if you undershot it-
Yeah.
I wouldn't necessarily call it a wish list, I would call it a needs list.
Needs, yes, yes, it's absolutely a needs.
And also, I don't want to bypass, I mean, the Finance Committee, last year, we didn't basically have one, and I just don't want to negate their role in this.
Neither do I.
That the next step is for these department heads to get their figures together and get their information together, and to then have an appointment with the department head starting as soon as possible.
Right.
So-
They're the ones who-
John and Francine.
Yeah.
Were any forms sent? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just, I, I just wanted to say that the Finance Committee is the group that teases out the detail of the budget and comes forward with a recommendation.
Yeah.
Because what we did last year-
Yeah.
Was, was not the way to get this done, and, you know, I, I think there were things that might have been overlooked, but we had no choice at that time. We were, we were crushed. This way it would be a more thoughtful process.
Yeah, and I, I would hope that they've been asked to give some, some narrative justification for their budget figures, right, Ed, so that we've got, you know, you know, I know, oftentimes the budgets I've seen, even like for the CARES Act stuff, I mean, John Workman puts together, you know, detailed explanation about what he wants and why he wants it. He's, he's one of the few that I've seen that really, you know, lays that out very clearly. And so I think that, you know, that justification, the narrative, is, is really important for everybody, too. And, you know, they've got to keep in mind, they did get a few things through the CARES Act, so that may, oh, you know, sort of, not, well, it'll, it'll help some of their earlier wish lists, shall we say, maybe, because, you know, they might, those may not be- Not, well, it'll, it'll help some of their earlier wish lists, shall we say, maybe because, you know, they might, those may not be. Necessary now because they got funded elsewhere. It might've been on last year's list that we cut, but now, now they got it kind of made up through the CARES Act. So with that in mind. What else do they really need as opposed to, you know, just that wish, like you said, so. Yeah, just clarity in terms of what you want them to do. You've already given them some instructions, I gather. So. They, they presumably been working on their budgets because they were due, aren't they due like in a week or something or?
Well, Ed, did you send out forms to the department heads yet?
Not the Excel form, no.
So nothing went out to the department yet for requests?
The letter, the letter did. And so it would follow up with the, the Excel form.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing Lucy in the bottom left and she's shaking her head saying something, but she's muted.
Ed, I did not get a letter from you.
Okay, I mailed them out about a week or so ago. So that could be part of the. I'll send it again, Lucy.
But I did not get one, so.
Yeah, and I think I, I mentioned, yeah, I mentioned to you, Ed, too, after our assessors meeting, Martha said she hadn't got one either.
Yeah.
Either.
I put, I put one in her mailbox just to make sure.
Okay. Yeah, we're thinking town hall. Let's, let's put them in the mailboxes if nothing else, why not?
Well, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so, so there'll be a follow up with department heads and there'll be a scheduled meeting with finance. You know, starting as soon as possible and hopefully with. You know, a plan for two level budgets, one, you know, a level with contracts and one needs based or whatever, you know, I don't.
Yeah.
I like that priority needs list.
Yeah.
I like, I like the, the word needs.
And so, you know, so who, can I just add, like, who, who is this going to get, who is this going to get sent it to? Like, who do we consider? The department heads to be in? I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I guess like. You know, I know it's police, which is Ian. I know it's fire, which is John. I know it's highway, which is Randall. I know it's you, Ed, which is. You know, town hall. I know it's.
Building inspector.
Building inspector, library, C O A.
Board of health, C O A, library.
It's every department.
Sure. Who, who at the school does this get sent to? Who at the school? Does it get sent to Bobby? Does it get sent to Elisa? Should it get sent to both? Does it get sent to school committee?
It gets, it gets sent to both Elisa and Bobby. I mean, they, they do their own thing.
Well, they do, but if they don't get, but and this is the reason why I'm asking this because I am, I am the liaison to this and, 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 and I have to, I have to at least say this and defend this. So like. Hampshire Regional does an incredible job of coming up with their, you know, their two different budget scenarios. Call it their level funded plus contract increases and then their needs based one. And this is something that Christian Smithy does really well. I feel like there is a disconnect between what, like, like, for instance, what we've kind of come up with here is a level funded plus contract increase budget. Plus a needs base and a needs based budget. That needs to get transmitted to, to somebody at our own local school at Norris. Because inevitably speaking, especially last year when we were doing this, like, it felt like, like this. Sending this to the school, I know the reason why we don't do it. It's because the school is just on one line. And so there's no sense in sending them an Excel spreadsheet that's got one line for four million dollars or whatever it is, like. They'll come up with their own budget. The problem is, is that they're constantly messaged. Just like most departments in town, that we are constantly struggling for funds. And so my concern is, now, I'm happy to be. To take the message to them, but I prefer that it come out of committee and board where. We're asking for the two different budgets and that that's clear to whoever needs to know this. I, I would imagine that it would be Bobby. And Elisa and perhaps school committee. But, you know, I want them to know that they, that they have every right, just like every other department does to do. A level funded plus contract increases and then a needs based budget. The needs based budget. Is it, you know, they need to do that work. They need to at least see that they have the opportunity to ask for some things that they may need. And historically speaking, and I've watched their school committee meetings, they're like, they don't even put it down because they're like, oh, we're never going to get that. I don't know if every other department does the same thing in their, in their meetings, but. But that's what they do over there. And I'd like to see at least our board somehow or out of this meeting, like it does get transmitted. To them in the same way it gets transmitted to the other departments.
But, but ultimately, the, the, this. Whoever puts the budget together for Hampshire Regional and Norris should. Present it to the finance committee as everyone else does. I know that the jurisdiction of approving it is, is with those respective. School committees. Nonetheless, this process. And, and, you know, the sharing of information and understanding, I think is really important. Did it go through our finance committee?
Yep. And I just want to remind you that our budget process says that on or about December first, the town administrator. Sends the information to the departments and committees. So that they're thinking about their priorities for the budget and on or about January fifteenth. Is when the select board's budget priorities that they begin to meet with the finance committee. And the town accountant to discuss their proposal on or about February fifteenth. Is a draft budget back to the select board and finance committee. So. I think we're already a little bit behind on this. And so the sooner the department heads. Get their letter and Excel and get appointments with the finance committee, the better.
Now, just a thought here, this would be ideal time at the department head meetings to start talking about the budget process while department heads are there.
Yeah. Okay, so any other comments about the budget? Okay, so. Just in wrapping up this discussion, I just want to say that I agree with what Chris just said about the importance of recognizing our employees. It's been a very, very difficult year and I'm aware that people did not get raises last year and that personally I would support. Our recognizing our, our employees and making sure that we do anything possible. To make sure that we're moving forward in terms of their compensation and raises. So that's.
I, I might suggest that the least priority number one from me across the board would be to. For the select board to consider all the non-union employees for a cola and not. And finding a way to fund that rather than leaving him out with no cola at all.
Right. I, I, I think there's agreement with that. Yeah. And I would just request that we not refer to it as a wish list. I think that gives the wrong message. I think that. We should be focused on what do you need to have a solid department to serve the residents of Southampton?
All right. Now, is there, is there a timeframe when the department heads have to get it back to you? Has that been established yet?
Yes, February, I think it's eight. So I'd have to double check that, but I think it's February.
Okay, so they're going to need those forms as soon as possible then?
Yeah.
Anything else on the budget, Chris? You're, you're waving. Are you muted? Can you unmute, Chris?
She is.
No, she's muted.
Well, she's waving her arms all around.
No, thanks. Yeah, I'm sure I couldn't unmute. So tied with what I just said, how would we go about if we wanted to do an update of that study? Is that something we can do internally at P Q B? How, how does that happen? Do we need? Do we need funds to do that for an outside consultant to help us for a month or something to put it together or, you know, what, what would that take?
Outside consultant to do that.
Yeah. And do we think it would be a long process? I mean.
Honestly, I. I'm looking at it now. I'm trying to see if this was based on two twenty eighteen numbers. So it's already old.
No, no, I had brought it up to date to last year.
You did.
As far as, as far as that goes.
Who did? What up to date, Ed?
You mean these two?
What's that?
You mean up to date?
You mean the two schedules, the wage classification schedules, the exempt and non-exempt chart?
The ones that were in the presentation that Art utilized?
Yeah. Were those, were those updated? Was that what he did or you did or somebody?
That's, well, he, he had brought them up to date and I believe he used two percent per year. To bring them up to date to last year.
That was presented almost exactly a year ago.
But, but that's closer to being up to date than I thought it was. So other than doing. Some other percentage that we can do ourselves. I mean, why would we have to go to an outside consultant?
Can I just read according to his introduction, this was based on fiscal year seventeen. But he added four percent to the current compensation plan to bring it up to fiscal year twenty.
Okay.
So it's in, it's in the document.
Okay, so we added two percent to the current figures. We would, you know, theoretically.
Bring it up to date, yes.
In fact, we're talking two, two, twos here for colas.
So could we, could we not do that as an internal P Q B kind of exercise with? Or do we have to really have an outside consultant help us with that?
Well, honestly, I, I look at it because it, it gives a minimum, a mid and a, and a maximum.
Right.
And who makes that determination? I mean, I think we should.
The department head.
Okay.
No, it should, it should be done on a comparison to other communities.
It, it, it is. I mean, the numbers are based on that, but how we categorize our own employees. I mean, there are some, and I will be honest with you, some that aren't, that aren't even on this chart, that, that their salary is that low.
And, and, and that's, that's where I get into the fact that that needs to be updated by a consultant because. Number one, and, and not a big disagreement on my part, but I, I would say that there is probably maybe. Five percent of individual, positions in that chart that I disagree on where they're rated. I also believe that there should be. One more level of grade that is in there, but that's me.
But how quickly can we turn something like this around? Or do we make a commitment that we're going to do something this year and then we're going to work? We're not going to get a, a whole study done and, and all this implemented. So we should make a decision about it.
I mean, personally. Here's my take on it. I think that that study should be redone professionally. Number one. Number two, there is no reason that the select board. Without accepting that study cannot go back and say. Maybe our number, our number one priority is a two percent cola for all non-union employees. That we're not going to leave them behind again. And number two is just like Art had said last year. Pick a category. I, I don't, I, and I'm, I'm not telling you what to do or which one to pick, but. Either take a look at the department heads, take, or take a look at the administrative assistants. And that would be probably the two categories that do come to the top of my head and say, okay. We're going to address this portion of this scale. To the best that we can utilizing that chart. And I think, I think last year, and I can't remember. If it was just on the administrative level or what. But I think Art had done some calculations and said that. Debt cost last year was like, I don't know, twenty four, twenty five thousand dollars or twenty six thousand dollars. And, and that's the way, that would be a way to look at it as a start.
Okay, the category that we talked about was taking, for, for example. Positions that are the highest percentage off of the range. So not just the lowest or the highest, but the ones that is the farthest out of whack, so to speak.
Yep, that's another way to look at it.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Any other comments on this?
Well, I, I, again, I'll, I'll bring this to the P Q B.
Okay.
For their recommendations.
Okay. Okay, so if we're done talking about the budget, then the next item on the agenda is the town administrator evaluation. So in keeping with the guidance that we were provided by K P Law. I met with Ed last Friday and we reviewed the evaluation and after this open session. There is a meeting to discuss the contract. So that's really the only update I have on that. Unless anybody has any questions. Okay, any other necessary business that cannot wait until the next regularly scheduled February ninth select board meeting? I have one item. John, we're sorry to see you leave the committee, but we do have to talk about the fact that you are liaison. I'm counting right now at least five things, if not all the extra things you're doing with the positions. Public safety, Greenway, finance, planning and I T. Did I miss any?
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah, public safety.
Do you have finance, planning, public safety, Greenway, I T? That's five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So public safety only meets sort of as needed and hasn't had a meeting in a while. Greenway, kind of the same thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Paul, Paul for Gal's working with Chris on that.
Okay. And then find the big one obviously is finance, plan, and then the I T being the newer one. You know, everybody's pretty maxed out on committees, so I understand that. Do we need, is there any committee that may not necessarily need a liaison for the next? Three to four months until the.
Plan, planning would probably be the third in there. It's very interesting. It doesn't take any of your time. But I T and this are finance, you're actually involved with pretty heavily. Planning is more, you know, you're, you're there in case they have to ask you a question, but it is interesting. It's only, it's twice a month, you know, depending on how many items they have on the agenda.
Okay. So that might be one that, you know, in the absence of five members, we might be able to just wait until we have a, a fifth to actually assign.
Or rotate it out, you know, because again, it is interesting. You find out what's going on around on the building side of town. So that, that helps out. But if you rotate, you don't have to take one really every two months because if it goes two times a month, that's for you.
Yeah. I think that the big one that I'm, you know, thinking about is finance. I know that, and again, I know everybody is very busy with committees. And it's very, very difficult to just add some. So that's why I'm asking if there's other committees that people are on that might be able to. Either rotate or take a little bit of a backseat to finance and I T, which are pretty big issues right now. Francine, you were on finance before. Matt, you played a huge role in the budget processes past time. Is there any committees you can trade off on? I mean, I would pick up one of yours, Francine, if you would like. I just think your expertise might, you know, we have a brand new finance committee. So I'm just looking for suggestions, everybody, just throwing things out there. Any ideas? Go ahead, Chris. You're muted.
He's muted.
Muting yourself?
Sorry, I've got this background noise on. I was able to unmute myself, but now I'm not. Yeah, no, I, I would just like to suggest that I wouldn't mind, I'm no big expert on it, but I wouldn't mind following up with the tech committee. And to the extent that the Greenway committees gets going, I, you know, since I've been involved so much in the grant, I wouldn't be mindful of that, but. Those would be my only two because right now they wouldn't take up a lot of extra time for me, but I think the tech one is important and I'd, I'd be glad to try and sit in on that if nobody else. Was wanting to do that. So.
Yeah. And the I T committee has been very good about limiting the timeframe. They keep it right within the timeframe.
That's good. Well, thanks, Chris. Is there any, you know. That's good. Well, thanks, Chris. Is there any, you know, so you're fine with just adding that obligation for now?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't see that as, you know, a big preparation thing on my end. It's just more attending, that's all.
Okay, and I would be willing to do Finance. And I don't necessarily have to give up anything. ZBAA meets very infrequently, only when there's a, you know, an issue coming forward to them. Community preservation has not been meeting. They may, those meetings may start to pick up now between now and the budget time and the annual town meeting. So, I think I could do Finance, but I want to defer to Matt, since he was so heavily involved last year in the preparation and so forth, to see if it's not something he would want to do.
Yeah, and Matt's sitting there smiling. He must be agreeable with you.
Yeah, he must be on bedtime duty. He might be on bedtime duty. We can come back afterwards and just swing it by him.
Okay.
I appreciate that, you know, and if you find that CPC does pick up, I was liaison in the past to CPC, I'd be willing to jump in and cover that for you if you want. Matt, you have an interest in doing liaison to Finance. Francine wants to just make sure that that's not, she doesn't want to take it away if you want to be involved in that.
I mean, if I'm, you know, look, I didn't hear the front part of this conversation. I don't want to be the, I don't necessarily want to be the guy. I'm sincerely pretty maxed out.
Okay.
I imagine that all of you guys are too, but I'm doing a meeting every night, like, between both schools.
Yeah.
It seems, they seem to be meeting, like, they seem to be meeting twice in one day at this point.
Well, I just...
And I mean that. Like, I think today, there was actually two school committees at Regional. I'm like, this is what is happening here.
Francine offered to do Finance. She just, with all the work you did last year, she just didn't want to jump into it without your chiming in.
No, I mean, I like doing the Finance. I just, I...
Now she's gone.
No, she's there. I mean, I don't know.
Okay, no problem. I mean, she's willing to do it.
Go for it.
First stepped up to do Tech. And I will, I'll jump in when I can to Planning, okay? I'm very interested in that. I don't know if it'll work out time-wise. I think they made a meet on Wednesdays. I'm just joining the MVP, so I don't know what that's going to look like, but I'll certainly try to join. If not, try to get a report for now. And then if it gets busy, Francine, just let me know. I'm happy to, CPC, okay?
Okay, will do.
And Reenie, on the Planning, it's 7 o'clock on Wednesdays, and Paul Demon runs a very good meeting, and he gets through it well.
Yeah, I was actually at the last one when they had the hearing.
That's right, yeah.
Yep, and what about Public Safety?
Yeah, they haven't really met.
Public Safety complex, no. I think Charlie Knickie used to be the Chair, and he resigned from that. There's nobody there. It's the, you've got to look for some place to put it. That's the problem. And it has, everywhere we've checked, nobody wants to sell that. Unless you want to do something by eminent domain, there's not a whole lot out there. At some point, though, somebody's got to make that decision.
Yep.
These buildings are crumbling.
Well, we just put it down as one of our priorities to pass along to Senator Villas. So, what we'll do is, we'll definitely keep it on the radar, but right now, there's not a scheduled meeting time.
Right.
So, with Greenway and Public Safety, yeah, Greenway came up number one, so we'll keep that, we'll keep them going. But right now, Francine will cover Finance, and Chris will cover IT, and I'll try to jump into Planning.
So, John, I'll be in touch with you. You bring me up to speed, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, I might just, the next meeting is next week, is it, or whatever? I might just join in on that as a, you know.
Okay. Okay, takes a lot of people to fill your shoes, John, just so you know.
Yeah, really.
And Reenie?
Yes?
Me? You just jogged my memory. One other piece. John is the voted backup signer to Christine for the warrants. And with him leaving, we'll need somebody to fill his shoes for that, too. So, the Board would have to find a willing individual, and then make a motion in a second, and vote for that individual to be the backup warrant signer.
Okay.
I would be willing to do it. Because I'm retired, I can get there during the day.
Right, and you did it just prior to Chris, so would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
Someone.
Second.
Okay, so Chris and then John, all in favor of Francine being the backup person to sign the warrant, say aye.
Fals aye.
Chris, aye.
Mark, aye.
And Groden, aye. Did you vote, Matt?
Roll and aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business that can't wait until the next meeting?
Yeah, I've got one thing I'd like to bring up. I think everybody might have gotten a copy, or maybe not, but there's something that came out, again, from PVPC about their, basically their DLTA grant, and this is the grant that Cindy and I worked on last year for the Master Plan Committee to get a consultant to help us with all that we did with the Master Plan last year. And they are open for applications. Again, this came out, I think, yesterday. Again, I love these long notices. It's due, the application, I believe, is due on the 5th.
5th of February, right.
And so, this is something that, you know, we found very useful last year. I mean, we certainly got more than our money is worth out of Ken with Master Plan. I think we wore the poor guy out. He hasn't been able to talk to me for about two weeks at least. We're still waiting on his final, his final report so we can meet. But anyway, I think it's worth taking advantage of, and what my, I had two or three ideas that I just wanted to float. Maybe just picking up from the rear end of what we've been talking about. So, this could be possibly one idea to get a consultant to help us with this updated HR study, perhaps. We've talked at times, too, about, you know, how can we maximize our budget and our resources and people in town, et cetera. We've talked about regionalization from points to point, you know, when we're dealing with the building inspector. You know, we looked at opportunities for regionalization. Maybe there's something there that we can explore. At one point or another, I think we had even talked about that for a health agent or Board of Health, et cetera. You know, those are the kinds of things that sort of kind of come and go, but those might be possible ideas for putting in a grant application. My other one, though, that I actually came up with first, largely because of the Master Plan, is to take a look at those couple second and third priorities that came up as sort of top thoughts from the residents, which were basically that public utility, exploring the possibility more of that public utility, internet broadband, and also pursuing the idea of renewable energy generation. So, I'm thinking you could actually combine the two of those into one little proposal, and have somebody help us look at, you know, what are the problems out there? What are the opportunities for the town? You know, what are potential partnerships? What are potential funding resources? And give us something to, you know, work from, rather than, you know, some abstract idea, but to really start to concretize it a little bit. So, there's at least, say, three proposals there. That combined one, maybe something from a regional service overlook, and maybe that's, I don't know if that's as relevant at the moment, but the other one, though, maybe that HR study update. So, just a thought on that, and I guess I would like, I would volunteer at least on the the Master Plan one that I know better, for the renewable energy and the broadband internet upgrade type stuff, public utility, to put together an application to comprise that, but I really don't think I would be capable of the other two. But the point is, they're due on the 5th, which is just an insane turnaround time. It's not a very long application, but nonetheless, it takes a little bit of thought. And you don't, if I remember last year, we didn't even propose an amount of money. They kind of look at what you're trying to do, and they say, okay, we know that we can do this with this person, and this amount of time we're going to allocate, and this amount of budget. So, we don't even have to play with that kind of notion. It's more just articulating what we would like to get done and what we want to see as a result. I'd be willing to put one of those together. You can have more than one application from town, and I would guess that probably Planning Board, because this comes to them, too. Usually, it's a grant that either Planning Board or Select Board has to sign off on. So, I'm assuming Planning Board may have their own ideas for putting their grant idea forth on whatever, bylaws or zoning, or I don't know what they might be looking at. But I took a foot in the door to volunteer to turn one around and at least get us on their list. But I would rather have a vote on what we would want to do, and you're authority to do so.
What do people think?
I think all the ideas she presented are great, and I'm, 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 I think going with what was the outcome of the Master Plan survey, those couple priorities with communication infrastructure, renewable energy. And if you want to take that on, I'm very happy to go with that. But the other two ideas you presented, Chris, I don't... Find someone.
Anybody else have any ideas about that?
There may be some other grants to do those kinds of things, Francine, too. There's a couple of other municipal things that are coming across our desk. So, it might, you know, I haven't had a chance to read them yet, but they might qualify. So, we don't have to fill it all in on this one. I'm just thinking those were the ideas that came across my fuzzy brain at the moment.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to complete those application, that application. And to me, it seems like the regionalization idea is like always something that we should be considering. The state's very much in favor of that, but I think we'd have to have a little bit more support from some of the other. I mean, the building we just hired, Inspector we just hired, Board of Health. You know, we had actually appointed Charlie, I think, you know, to forward that expertise around regionalization. So, the Board of Health, I think, would have to, you know, a little bit more buy-in and be part of this. I think the HR or the Master Plan, either one of those, I think, would be very relevant to right now. So, are you looking to have a motion to support, since it seems like you're leaning more towards getting a little bit more detail around options for the second Master Plan request from the community? Are you looking for a motion for us to support that as the, as a grant?
Yeah, that would be my request, and only because, I mean, I like the HR Plan upgrade, personnel salary range, whatever, upgrade, but I just don't feel comfortable enough, knowing enough about it, to write up an application for that, so.
Maybe a compact grant, you know.
Yeah.
Francine brings that to the PQB, maybe that would be, that would be perfect for that.
Yeah, there might be other resources for that. That's my thinking from a couple of things I've seen. So, I would say I would rather aim for the couple priorities, you know, sort of priorities two and three from the Master Plan survey.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I'll discuss the HR potential, but that's a very short turnaround. Chris, can you just send me whatever you have as the application?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, would you, somebody like to make a motion to direct Chris to apply for this grant?
I move to...
Sure, I'll make the motion. I'll second it, then.
Okay, so the motion is that you move to submit a...
Authorize, Chris.
... grant to explore the second priority of Master Plan, which was to look at renewable resources and broadband internet service for Southampton, what the options are, a little bit more detail.
Yeah, yeah, like I say, I think, what are the options out there? What are some of the problems that communities have faced? What are the opportunities that we might have just because of where we're located? And, you know, what are the possible partnerships out there? What are the funding sources that could help us put anything like that into play?
So, just to be clear about this, so the, number one was a Greenway, number two was internet broadband, number three was renewable energy?
I believe so. I'd have to check.
Or open space. I thought open space was...
Open space might have been third, and that would have been solar, or renewable energy might have been fourth. You're right. I'd have to look at that again, but it was in the top five, for sure.
All right, so a motion and second, all in favor?
Chris, aye.
Fals aye.
Mark, aye.
And Groden, aye. Well, thanks for doing that again.
Yep, and Reenie, you'll have to sign that, I believe, so, when I get to it.
Yeah, just let me know. I'll go right now. Okay, so that brings us to, there are no PCFs or PRFs, and there are no licenses and permits, so the warrants, Chris.
Yep, okay, all righty. Hang on here. Right, we have three warrants tonight. We have a vendor payable warrant, W2129, in the amount of $275,204.56. A payroll warrant, P2130, in the amount of $286,819.90. And a payroll deduction warrant, PD2130, in the amount of $40,818.70. That's it.
Any questions? Any questions on the warrants? I had a question. One of the items was Stryker. Is that something that we, I knew you'd appreciate that? Was that like something for the fire department, a stretcher, or something like that? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that, from my memory, was actually the chest compression machine.
Oh, okay, I'm just curious.
Who was, who was the salesperson, who was the salesperson on that one?
Not me.
I want a tutorial, though.
It's the Lucas. It's a freaking, it's an unbelievable device. It's called Lucas.
What does it do? It just, does CPR?
It does, it does, and it'll do chest compressions unlimited.
You don't get exhausted doing CPR?
You don't have to have a cycle or a person's cycle. It does them correctly with the right amount of pressure.
Yeah.
And it'll go forever.
Chief Workman loves it. He said it just saves his staff.
Yep.
Yep.
It applies the right pressure every time, and at the right beat, and it's, yeah.
Doesn't get tired.
That was an acquisition not many years ago. I mean, just for the record, there is no conflict there between Stryker and myself. I have to just say, I don't file for this, because I don't, I don't need to. There's an emergency services division of which I am not associated with at all. I do work for Stryker. I work in the Endoscopy Division doing primarily surgical cameras and visualization. And the town, I hope, never need that.
That's a dirty job, Matt.
Yeah. I knew that. I was just curious, because I know that John had asked for a number of emergency-type receipt items.
Yeah, but those machines are amazing. When I was in West Springfield, we obtained one. The fire department EMS never had one before. We had obtained one on a grant, and within, within a year, that piece of equipment had actually saved the life of someone I knew.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing that's in the ambulance, just shameless plug, is the stretcher. You can't really have an ambulance without a Stryker stretcher in there. Or at least you don't have a proper ambulance without a Stryker stretcher.
Yeah.
At some point, we are all going to be touched by Stryker, one way or another.
And this commercial was brought to you by...
Yeah, exactly.
Public service announcement, not a threat.
Yeah. Not a threat.
Okay.
So, just one thing, since you mentioned that, Reenie, on that vendor warrant, if you look under the COVID category, you'll see that was the one, I believe, that we had like $140,000 worth of expenses, and that's largely CARES Act, that is basically the CARES Act stuff. So, that was, you know, indicative of the various departments getting, you know, their, the things that they had ordered through the CARES Act. So, that was a big outlay on this last vendor warrant.
Great. Any other questions about the warrants? Then we have four sets of minutes. Everybody get a chance to review them. Looks like September 8th, and they're very detailed, September 22nd. Do you want to do it all at once, or do people have edits for them, September 29th? And September, October 6th?
I just have one edit.
Okay.
On the September 8th minutes, Ed, under new business.
Hang on one second, okay? Let's just go there. September 8th. Okay, new business.
New business, the third bullet down, when it's talking about the, the snow plowing. The second and third bullet are, the third bullet starts to duplicate the second bullet, so the third bullet should be stricken.
All right, yeah.
Where is it?
New business. Third bullet.
Third bullet.
It begins the same sentence. The second bullet is complete, and then the third one just started to copy itself again there.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Anything else on any of them? They're very detailed.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to make a... Okay. So you want to make a motion then approve all of them with that one edit on the eighth ones?
Yes. So, so let's, let's, uh, approve all the minutes cited there for the three September and the one October meetings with that one correction.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Chris and then Francine, all in favor?
Fishman aye.
Falls aye?
Roll and aye.
Martin aye.
Broden aye. Thank you. There's a big packet, excuse me. Come up to. Anything on the pending items? The Green Communities Grant, Charter Building, Clearwater Woodland, Greenway? Nope. Uh, next meetings are February 9th and the 22nd. And we already have some, uh, things happening for those meetings.
Twenty-third, Reenie, not twenty-second.
What's that?
It's the twenty-third. You said this is twenty-second.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I'm looking at twenty-third and saying twenty-second. So February 9th and the twenty-third.
Can I, uh, just try and just clarify something?
Yeah.
On February 9th, we're going to have the presentation with the disability insurance folks and ask to invite someone from PBB. Now, if all of them want to attend, we can just post it as a joint meeting. Is that correct?
They can point, yeah, we can, yeah.
Yep. Both, we would both have to post.
Yes.
So, uh, following up on that, uh, what time do you want a consultant to come in on the ninth?
Yeah, that would, that would be helpful for a joint meeting, yeah.
Do we want to say six thirty, have them join us or?
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that sounds right. Six thirty.
Good.
Try to get some of the regular stuff out of the way and then.
So I'll let them know that.
And that would be on the, um, ninth of February.
Right.
Correct.
And then the following meeting, we're going to try to do the meeting about the, um, restoration and the, uh, presentation by the, um, Hill Architects, right?
Right.
Right. Okay. And then we actually have a special meeting on the fifth, right, for interviews?
Yes.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So John, when are you officially leaving town?
Uh, the twenty-ninth, which will be Friday, if fingers crossed, the house will close. We've been moving everything the last several weeks. It's amazing what you find that you bought 20 years ago that you didn't remember you had.
Yeah.
All right.
How long did you live in that house, John?
Twenty-six years.
Wow.
When we bought it, there was trees growing through it and the floor was collapsed and.
Wow.
Lot of memories.
Yeah.
I miss you, man.
Yeah.
You guys too. It was fun.
Yeah.
I mean, if it wasn't the residency. I was going to say, if it wasn't the residency requirement, you could still participate in our meetings through Zoom.
Yeah. I can still participate, just not as a member.
Okay. So I think we have the, uh, meetings in the plan. Um, so now it's open time for the public. Select Board reserves a portion of the meeting for public comment. It encourages participation. So Tammy, hello?
Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. I am here on behalf of the Southampton Historical Society. I want to make sure that people realize that we are having our January meeting. It is going to be held via Zoom. The meeting ID is eight, six, eight, seven, nine, seven, zero, eight, one, four, two. And it's this Thursday, January 28th at 7:00 PM. It's going to be a presentation from Andy Broder from the Connecticut Valley Mineral Club. And to get the pass code, you need to email Clark Chapman 1827 at gmail dot com. So we will have a quick meeting, um, with a couple of updates at the beginning and then we're going to go right into our, our program for the evening. So again, that's the Historical Society and you can also find this information on the Historical Soc- Southampton Historical Society Face- Facebook page.
Is it also on our webpage or no?
I try to. I, it's going to be bumped there again tomorrow.
Good. Great. Thank you very much.
No, thanks. I hope to see people on there. Should be interesting.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. So we do have a few correspondences that we wanted to share. And, um, I think we already made reference to a letter that came in from someone from Trinity Solar, who was interested in doing door-to-door sales and was backed up by an attorney's letter saying that it was determined by Governor Baker as an essential service. So as Ed mentioned earlier in his report, um, we are waiting for information back from KP Law as to whether or not we have a, uh, the ability or desire to, um, restrict that activity because of the pandemic. And we're waiting on that. Any questions about that? Uh, and there was another correspondence also that came in and it was relative to, I believe it was from a woman who was, uh, looking for information about the vaccine and was looking, uh, for help in, you know, having some publicity around what the seniors can expect. And what we heard tonight was that there is a letter going out to all seniors in town as soon as the information's available, how they can go to North Hampton or any other site and, um, sign up to get a vaccine. And that was actually a letter that came in from Marjorie Strikers. And I think, Ed, you wrote back to her about that. Any questions about that?
I did.
Uh, were there any other correspondences, Ed, that we should mention? No?
Nothing that I received.
Okay. All right then. I guess, uh, if there's nothing else, then, uh, we are going to have executive session and I will read the reason for going in. We have two items. The first is Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-using personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-using personnel, town administrator. And then the second is Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 7, to comply with or act under the authority, uh, of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Approval of executive session minutes, November 17th, 2020, December 15th, 2020, and January 12th, 2021. Uh, we won't be returning to open session tonight, so we can have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
I'll second.
I think everybody, uh, basically, I don't know who you want to. Yeah, we'll let Kathy, I guess, decide who. All in favor?
Fishman aye.
Falls aye.
Roll and aye.
Martin aye.
And Groden aye. So it's just around nine forty, five minutes, 10 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Now, there's a separate link. So.
Reenie, you're going to text me when you want me to join?
No, you actually, I think you're joining from the beginning, are we, are you not? Um, and then we will ask you to sign off and then, or, or what, what would the board like to do?
That works. That would let Ed go home.
Yeah, go ahead and first, uh, join us in the beginning and, um, and then we'll have you sign off and then we'll all do the minutes.
Okay.
Sound all right? Because I think you're the, you'll be the host initially on the, on the, um, meeting, okay? Everybody know, okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, good. All right. So what did we say? Five or 10? Ten. Nine fifty. See you then.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.